Okay, if everyone will take your seats, we'll get started. It's one o'clock. Welcome to the second budget workshop for the Board of County Commissioners. I'll call the meeting to order. Commissioner Goodson, will you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. Everybody please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I think I'll defer to the staff, but I think we're ready for Commander Bernath to resume.
Okay, we're gonna get right into it. We're gonna let Mr. Bernath continue from where he left off, and he's been practicing to speak a little bit quicker, and we'll see how good he did.
I only added an extra 15 slides. All right, so, you know, just to quickly refresh where we left off, we were about 10 slides in on the road and bridge, which is our largest program physically and also by slide content. But, you know, we finished transportation, construction, management, revenue generating report, and after that, we have traffic operations and facilities briefly covered, road and bridge budget, funding sources, commodity increases, maintained assets, growth first personnel, and a number of other miles of roads that we maintain. So we do 1,232 centerline miles. And then one commission office suggested that I open with a joke that I could stop right now if you just approve everything in the rest of my brief. So I figured I'd throw that out there. So this is where we were. So slide 36. So this is road inventory growth. New roads are added to our inventory each year due to residual residential and commercial growth. And over the last six years, on average, we've had four and a half miles per road, of road per year, added through the release of performance or maintenance bonds as part of development. So over the last 10 years, we've experienced 12% increase of our paved inventory, making it second only to Osceola, which saw 17% growth in their pavement. It's also important to note that Osceola's increase is largely due to their aggressive program for paving dirt roads, which we'll get into a little bit later towards the end of the road and bridge section. And as far as, when I say four and a half miles of new roads per year, it's not just the roads, it's sidewalks, it's drainage, it's curb and gutter, road parking, ADA improvements as well, all which, if you recall back during my last presentation, we have roughly the same amount of MSTU and funding that that falls on. So getting into the road program itself, it's one of the biggest programs that we have, not only in Public Works, but obviously in the county. We do a strategic rolling five-year plan each year, and it's based on accomplishments, it's changes, it's revisions from the board or other past direction from the preceding year. This slide also looks back because that's important to understand where we were and where we're headed specifically for this program. But in 2018, we had pervasive countywide road failure, potholes, and it should serve really as a cautionary tale to what could happen if we take our foot off the gas. So prior to 2018, there was no formalized program, and funding was based on effectively what could be scraped together year to year. The board only formalized a five-year program starting in 2018, and it was extended and continues today. Since 2015, we have spent $115.5 million on our roads, mostly climbing out of a very steep hole post-2018. Funding for our road program is comprised mostly of, from the general fund, but is also supplemented by MSTU and gas taxes. To date, we have completed 598 miles of resurfacing, 73 miles of reconstruction, 254 miles of preservation, for a total of 926 miles. Again, we have 1,232 centerline miles. So the blue on this chart is resurfacing, the red is reconstruction, the green is preservation techniques, which I'll get into in a few slides later. Fewer red miles because they're four times as costly as will be shown in the next slide. This also shows current levels of funding that we can afford to preserve more miles of road over the next five years, and we also intend to phase out almost all reconstruction with some potential challenges that I'll get into later in the brief. This allows us to refocus some of that limited funding on capacity, on safety projects, as well as needs, other needs, but it's fairly small. We only spend $4.7 million on reconstruction compared to $11.7 million on resurfacing and preservation. And as we reduce reconstruction, resurfacing and preservation is still needed in perpetuity and pegged to inflation so that we don't regress. So this shows a, some really good visuals. I think pictures are always worth a thousand words, and in this case, the pavement begins to deteriorate from day one. So on the left-hand side under good, you see fresh new pavement, and on the opposite side, you see what failed pavement looks like. So many factors affect deterioration rates, such as traffic loads, climatic conditions, sun exposure, temperature, age, material durability, water intrusion with, from poor drainage, construction. There are factors cause deterioration rate, which may be different in each pavement section depending on all those factors. And so to effectively manage our network of paved roads, we begin with a pavement management plan. The strategic document outlines our systematic approach to maintaining and repairing our paved roadways. The plan includes essential decision-making tools, such as a pavement condition assessment. This assessment generates a rating, which is known as a pavement condition index score, and the PCI provides a numerical evaluation of the condition of each road segment, where zero represents the worst possible condition and 100 represents the best. And so in the first photo, you could see new pavement with a PCI score of 100, which goes all the way down to 86. The pavement has no distresses and should only require routine maintenance, and our pavement management plan calls for applications of a surface seal. Typically, we apply Reclamite in year two and year seven. I'm not going to go through each one of these because, as you can imagine, we're going to be here long enough, but I can answer questions if you have it. In the fifth photo, all the way to the right, you know, that shows various patching, various types of distress, cracking, and wheel rutting, and it has a PCI which has failed between 0 and 25. And so you could see throughout the different pictures, they have progressively deteriorated. And I think this will be helpful as we go through the next few slides.
Mark, Commissioner Goodson.
Question. All that being said, how do you classify a road that's built with soil cement that cracks, and people call up and say, "My road's deteriorating"?
So, well, let me start with what we do. So we have the pavement condition assessment, and I'm gonna actually get into it in a little bit, but we do the pavement condition assessment every three to five years. Generally, it's been about every four, at least since 2019. Back in 2019, we did both a SCI as well as a PCI, but in the last one, we mostly focused on PCI. That's for all of our roads. In addition to that, we have teams from our field teams that go out every single year, ride every road, because the data is only one factor. So the data may not pick up all of the challenges, and also PCI doesn't actually address rideability of a road, it's really the integrity of the road. So we drive it, and recommendations are made by the field supervisors of which roads are falling in, or are at the risk of falling into the next category. That list then gets sent up here to Viera, where we're looking at it with our in-house construction team and our pavement management coordinator, and they do another pass looking at the roads. And all that to be said, we then come up with what our initial list is, and then we get with utilities and the other municipalities, particularly those that are doing water lines and, you know, like the City of Cocoa and City of Melbourne, and we try to de-conflict what they have possibly going on so that we're not having, you know, pavement cut right after we, you know, after we sell it.
My question is totally different. How do you qualify a soil-cement road that's falling apart when the homeowners say, "My road's falling apart due to cracks"? And if you know anything about soil cement, you could put a foot of asphalt on it, the crack come right back.
Yeah, and soil cement, you know, you can have, you know, excessive cracking, and that doesn't necessarily mean-
Bad road.
-bad road. So, but what I'm trying to describe is the process we go through.
I understand.
So when someone calls, we'll go out and look at it. Maybe we missed something, maybe there's something new, but we don't just, you know, automatically go and pave.
And most of our roads now, I don't know, very little soil cement being done in the county due to environmental reasons, okay? Now pug mix, yes, from the SNL mines. So is there a lot of pug mix being done, which cracks also like soil cement?
No, actually, I think, you know, we do a fairly decent amount of soil cement. Pug mix, I'm not aware of, other than there is, you know, one road we've talked about in your district-
Yeah.
...that I know definitely has it. Susan, do you have anything to say?
We use the pug mix mainly if we do a pipe crossing as a temporary patch prior to the resurfacing, but we don't put pug mix down as a base mixture. But you're right, in District Two, we do have a couple of roads that were dirt roads where they put pug mix, but we usually only for pipe crossings at this, over roadways.
And you also use the concrete fill for pipe crossings too, right?
Concrete fill.
Talking about pug mix to me is SNL mines. What you're talking about, concrete mix, sand mix?
Yes, sir. We bring in, just again, temporary until we can get in and mill and pave.
Do you find that to be good, the pug mix, the concrete, the sand mix?
For the purpose of, you know, stabilization, yes, but again, we would never use that for a base for a road base. And the cracking from the soil cement, Mark's right, we let them know that, hey, this is the base, it's not, it's not, the road's not deteriorating. If we put a, if we put a micro on that, any cracks that are more than a quarter of an inch, we seal them before we put any type of treatment on it. And we're trying to get away from so much soil cement. We're also looking more at the mixture. Sometimes that mixture can have a little too much, the design mix can have a little too much asphalt or concrete in it, so we've been looking at that as well.
Well, in the past, contractors would put more cement in it to make sure it passed.
Yes, sir.
Very nice. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, let me say something real quick. We need to speak into the mic because I don't think the video's gonna pick you up, okay? Okay. Commissioner Delaney.
Thank you. I just had a question about this. Does the deterioration have anything to do with the quality of the material?
It could, but a lot of times, it's really oxidation, it's sunlight hitting it, it's water intrusion, it's a number of factors, but most of the time, it's, you know, a combination. The material, we really, you know, we go out to bid every couple of years, but there's really historically been two different asphalt plants that have serviced the county. They have, you know, pretty good quality control. We're out there inspecting what they're putting down, so that is typically not the issue, and if we see it, we have them rip it up and replace it.
And what about best practices during construction? Like their processes of doing what they do? Does that make a difference if, say, somebody's, you know, are there different practices that people could go through to lay the road?
So if we're talking new roads, you know, there's obviously, you know, a whole host of industry standards and best practices. What we're really talking about here is the existing road system and going through a process by which we either try to extend the life or when we need to repair or replace it. So that is, you know, pretty straightforward. You know, it's just a matter of selecting which was the right application.
So there's no difference in quality as far as, like, different companies go, or materials that they use, or practices that they do to, like you said, do the rehabilitation of the roads?
Yeah, so pavement has actual categorization in Florida, so like, we use an SP nine and a half or an SP 12 and a half, and so they have to meet those standards, and we heavily rely on FDOT specifications so that we're not our own independent testing lab, we don't have an independent test in lab. So they have to meet those quality control gates depending on, you know, whether we're putting a friction course down or a structural course. So there's certain roads that need one or the other, but, you know, if you get an SP nine and a half, that's fairly standard.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just to add to that, every phase of that road building, from the filled dirt to the stabilization to the base to the asphalt, is checked by usually an independent testing laboratory to verify its construction standard to you, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Even for our own projects, we have, you know, independent testing. Okay. All right, so road pavement condition. So this slide shows the results of countywide pavement assessment back in 2019 versus 2023, as I mentioned in answering Commissioner Goodson's question. And so it ranges from good to serious, as you can see left to right. It's an industry standard to reassess pavement, as I mentioned, you know, every three to five years, and 88% of our roads right now are in a good satisfactory condition, and our overall report card is an 86 PCI, which is a good overall. So we have more good and satisfactory roads, which is on the left side, so that, kind of the brighter color is the more recent, and 2019 is the dollar color on the right side. In 2019, so as we were first starting to get our program ramped up, we had a 79 PCI, so we've grown from 79 to 86, but back in 2011, we had a 63, which was pretty, it's in the fair category, but fairly poor. And because of our investment, we've seen a 76% decrease in requests for permanent pothole repairs since 2020, so our work is definitely helping. History has shown that deferred road maintenance results in more roads needing major rehabilitation and reconstruction, which costs more, as shown on the slide. So if you see in the chart, the typical cost for preserving a road is everywhere from $14,000 to $80,000 per centerline of mile, but upwards of $865,000 per centerline mile for full reconstruction. So the more you invest, it's kind of like having a car, where you're doing preventative maintenance, you're doing that oil change, you know, every 3,000 or 5,000 miles. So by doing that preservation, we are extending our roads, and we're gonna get into that a little bit more, but not allowing them to fail where they're very costly to repair. So at this point, pavement needing reconstruction is not gonna get worse. However, what we're watching out for is a waterfall effect, where if you look at good or satisfactory, where basically it gets bad enough that it falls into that next category. And so we had to start there to, in 2018, to kind of really stop roads from failing. We've got a pretty good handle on that, but as you can see, we still have roads that are in serious condition and very poor, and we continue to work on those as well. So what we want to avoid is them quickly deteriorating into a poor condition and becoming at-risk roads. So our focus through FY '21 was to prevent roads from getting worse, as they can degrade by an average of one to two PCI points per year. But that means that if we eliminated or even cut back funding for resurfacing, which I mentioned we'd need in perpetuity, in five years, if you look at one to two PCI points per year, we could actually be worse than we were at in 2018. It requires continual investment, is the bottom line there. And by letting off the gas, you know, that would be another $115 million plus inflation all over again. So in FY '22, we reached an equilibrium of sorts, where we were able to start devoting some of the limited resurfacing money to preservation, and I'll get to that over the next couple of slides. So this is a symbolic chart showing best management practices and pavement preservation. Pavement preservation's been around for over 30 years, it's been tested by DOT, both US DOT and FDOT, even the US Air Force on runways. It has been used throughout the state as well as the country, just not here in Brevard County. So we began in 2022 piloting this because it was a great departure from what we previously had done, which was running our roads to failure. I mentioned before, that's not a good thing because it costs a lot more, and then needing to significantly reinvest. So we are currently only performing pavement preservation on local roads as we continue to ramp up, as we learn ourselves, as, you know, we're trying to be very selective so that we have successes and we can build off of those, and so we do that as, out of an abundance of caution. The key benefit of pavement preservation is cost-effective early intervention through treatments. Instead of a pavement gradually declining over 20 years and then needing to be rehabbed or reconstructed, as symbolically shown by the black line and then the dotted line, and then needing that rehab, that, if you could see, that curve, you start out at 100, it then declines, and over 20 years, over the course of that, you get into, if you recall, you know, a couple of slides back, those distresses, and the pavement gradually gets worse until, you know, at year 20 or possibly longer, you are riding on a really bad road until we reinvest. That is not the best way to manage pavement. So by doing pavement preservation, it preserves the service life, it delays the need for major repairs, and studies, as well as actual work throughout the country, has shown you could extend pavement life 20 to as much as 40 years. It really depends on a lot of other factors that I mentioned earlier. And so it keeps the roads in better condition longer, which is depicted by the green and blue. You could see in the green area, this is symbolic, but you could see that it drops off a little bit, but then we reinvest with that cheaper $14,000 per centerline mile investment and bring it back up, and then we get, we continue to keep it up there longer, and therefore, we stretch out the needed time. And so it is, you know, much more cost-effective, and it gives our citizens better roads theoretically for the entire life of that road system.
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
So I, I think it's called Reclamite?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. So the, one of the main roads in my community just got done with the Reclamite, and we were having, I got a lot of complaints when that was done because the stuff got on the people's cars and everything, and they were really not happy about that. And so I was wondering, is there another way to get it on the road? Or if not, is there a way that we could shift, like, the time that we're putting it on the road? So it has time to settle versus in the middle of the hustle and bustle of the day?
So, I mean, generally, in the middle of the day is when most people are out to work-
Right.
...but something on Reclamite, it fully washes off. I want to say it's vegetable-based?
Three, four, five, on a driveway, or it'll, it can be removed.
Right. Because even, like, it's been probably, it's been weeks now, and the reflective paint, like, is still orange, you know, and so-
Right. So but on driveways, sidewalks, cars, it generally washes off over time. And if there are concerns, you know, the citizens can get directly in touch with our contractor who will, you know, take a look at it. We, you know, when we've had issues, even with paving companies, you know, they're responsible to, you know, fix those damages.
So like, they'll pay for a car wash? Or what's, like, what's the practical of that?
I don't want to, you know, say definitively, but, you know, I think, you know, generally it washes away, and so it's actually a pretty good product. Soon as it is applied to the road, generally, it could be driven on within 30 minutes, and so it's a very quick application, and we try to do it during the day, like I said, to avoid most of the people that are generally at work. There's really probably no other good time to do it, but as far as the application-
Not like overnight or something?
I could certainly bring it back and ask if that's a, if that's an option, but I think you still have the same issues, cars on the driveway, driveway-
It wasn't really cars on the driveway, like, people were saying that it was getting up into the undercarriage of their vehicles, it was like getting stuck on the bottom parts of their vehicles and things like that, and so I, obviously, I see the value in it, you know, and I'm not objecting to that. I just didn't know if there's maybe a different process that would work.
We'll take a look at it.
Okay, thanks.
So, you know, trying to finish out this slide, as the saying goes, good roads cost less, and on the bottom left and right respectively, it shows a comparison of preserving a two-lane road and that, what it would cost over 40 years by diligently milling and paving every third- every thirteen years, avoiding the costlier two-to-four-time rehab or reconstruction if we waited for failure versus what it would cost to do, you know, those pavement treatments that we just mentioned. And as you can see on the left-hand side, you have a forty-year cost for two-lane road, which is roughly two hundred thousand dollars cheaper. But the bigger point isn't not just we're saving money, we're keeping the road in better shape longer. And so that has significant value. Appreciate it. So switching to road backlog, this is showing the road backlog by district. So we're always going to have some level of backlog. These are roads that are under sixty-six PCI. Of course, unless we want to, you know, even spend more money. But I think the monies that we've been able to have afforded to us by the board, we have shown that we're good stewards and we, you know, have definitely through our grade of our PCI, have continued to show improvement and why it works. But considering our level of funding, there will always be some level of backlog. So, you know, the fact is, roads continue to age. I mentioned, you know, in answering Commissioner Delaney, why some of those, you know, factors happen. But with a continued funded preventative maintenance plan, we can control the backlog and ensure that we don't fall into at-risk categories in the future. So we are still battling with, you know, roads that are in that, that's that brown and red areas, which you could see, you know, compared to the total number of miles we have, which is one thousand two hundred and thirty-two miles, it's actually fairly small. But they're also the most costly things to fix, and so we have to spread that over time. So right now, what this shows in the right-hand side, in 2017 versus today, we only have seventy-four miles of backlog as compared to seven hundred and thirty-four miles of backlog before we had the implemented program in 2018. And so you could see that District Five has the most amount of roads that still need to be reconstructed. And while this has significantly decreased over time, it also started out as the worst district needing the most costly reconstruction back in 2018. So we've continued to work down each of the districts, trying to spread the money where it is best needed and most needed. District One has the most roads overall in the county. And District Two has been challenging because it has the most amount of utility sewer, plant, soil projects, among other issues like FEC and FDOT projects, waterline projects. And like many areas around the county, the area is booming. And so that presents challenges to our schedule and also may present a challenge. If you recall a couple of slides ago, where I said we'll all but finish our reconstruction over the next five years, those things are out of our control. But the worst thing that can happen is we go in there and we pave, and we know that utilities is going to come in right behind us. So we're trying to coordinate those things. And so that could extend that 2030 timeframe. But that is the best projection based on the things that we know today. So switching away from roads to bridges, so this is a five-year, this is our five-year strategic plan for bridges. So we maintain forty-eight county bridges as part of this strategic plan. This shows a rolling five-year bridge plan that is also updated annually. And it shows the number of bridges that will be rehabbed and replaced as we look ahead, as well as the projected cost. So the budget graph shows what we have funded versus what is unfunded. And as you can see, over this five-year period, we're showing an eight-and-a-half million dollar delta of things that we believe need major rehab or replacement versus the funding that we have today. We don't have a funding mechanism other than taking it out of, you know, existing projects. So the district MSTU budgets contribute approximately five hundred thousand a year towards minor bridge repairs. And you could see that, that's the, in the bottom chart, all the, the number is in the box, but it's the green boxes. And the rest is largely made up by gas taxes. So in 2023 and 2024, we completed bridge projects in Districts One, Two, and Three. That included Miko Bridge, the rehabilitation of the James Clark Pedestrian Bridge, and the Sykes Creek Parkway Bridge Rehabilitation. We're now focused on required rehabilitation and replacements in District Two and Four to stay ahead of deterioration. So we're currently on Sea Ray Bridge, which is under construction and fully funded. The West Central Avenue Bridge, also in D2, is in design. We're nearing completion of design. And construction is not fully funded, although we sought state appropriations in the upcoming legislative session. And if not, our backup plan is to look at a combination of impact fees as well as gas taxes so that we can try to bridge that gap. And that will be a continuing theme as we go year to year unless we find, you know, additional funding.
Ask you a quick question, technical on that, Mark. Is that in F dot trust fund, your appropriation, or is it a member appropriation?
So right now, this is that legislative process through the legislative delegation process. We've asked, it's on the shortlist for consideration. We don't know yet whether or not it will be picked up.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So Mathers Bridge, D4, major components such as span motor replacements were completed in '23 and '24. Some of you might recall, we had a number of bridge closings, you know, in that timeframe due to very costly, large components that are only made in Germany. We currently have a generator that's going in now for backup power. And now we're mostly focused on preventative measures, which also includes upgrading security systems such as camera and lighting, and also replacement of droop cables, which in the past was also an issue because as the bridge moves, those cables get crunched over time, and then it doesn't provide the electricity to the things that, you know, make it move. And then finally, on Mathers Bridge, we're also starting to look at corrosion protection. We have, that's in the planning process. We have a lot of concerns with corrosion on that bridge. North Banana River Drive, both the north bridge and the south bridge, as well as the Gerard replacement are all in District Two, currently all unfunded. And we, as we get further along with some of the others, we'll start looking at designing and how we fund those. Impact fees are not enough to cover all these, as you could see, you know, just based on the shortfall. But we'll continue to look for opportunities potentially through future legislative requests. It's important to note that out of the bridges on North Merritt Island, the Central Bridge, the two North Banana Bridges and Gerard, only Gerard actually meets the minimum standard to be on the National Bridge Inventory, which means that it's at least twenty feet longer or longer. And therefore, none of the other bridges qualify for federal grants. So we're looking at alternatives for those of how we fund them internally or potentially with the state's help. We also have the Tucker and Rockledge Creek Bridge Replacement, D4, which is unfunded. All of those are part of this five-year program, showing you what funding we have and what funding we don't have. So we have thirty-eight bridges on the National Bridge Inventory out of the forty-eight. And FDOT by statute is required to assess them, and they do that on a rolling two-year basis. We get reports, and then we make adjustments. So right now, the maintenance and the major rehabilitations is based on what we know today. Tomorrow, we may get a bridge report, and we may have to adjust things. And that's why we have a rolling five-year plan. For the ten non-NBI bridges, we're currently working to line up a consultant to do our own inspections. We've done that on average every four to five years. Those are smaller bridges, a lot of pedestrian bridges. But we don't have the in-house technical staff competent to look at a bridge and determine, you know, what needs to be done. So we have a professional, similar to the way FDOT does it, gives us the report. And similarly, you know, we'll triage those things and add it to this list as needed. Switching to Drainage Maintenance Program, another big program for the county. So before 2017, the Road and Bridge Program only had one dedicated countywide drainage crew. This resulted in significant backlog of outfall and collector ditches on a cleaning cycle that exceeded ten to twelve years. Moreover, past record-keeping was not as good as today, where we have everything in GIS. We've also discovered ditches that have not been maintained in twenty to thirty years as we review old documents and/or issues come up, and we add those to our inventory. Additionally, there was no formal swell rehabilitation program in place. In 2018, the board decided to fund additional, an additional countywide drainage crew. And in 2020, we expanded to a total of three crews, one serving the north, one serving central, and one serving south Brevard. That is in addition to the regular five maintenance teams. This helped reduce the cleaning cycles down to three to five years, reducing flooding in flood-prone areas, tackling the backlog, and improving drainage systems in each district. With the help of one-time COVID funding and mid-year supplements over the years, we now have a total of three long boom track hoes and four Kaiser walking excavators, which replaced aging equipment and also added to our efforts to be able to clean out some of these large and wide ditches. And then with the assistance of Brevard Career Source, they routinely have got training and hurricane damage grants. We've been able to rely on them for dedicated focus on specific ditch cleaning to augment us. And also, it serves as valuable training opportunities. And then also for us to potentially capture people as they finish the training program to then start with the county. So this has been a beneficial win-win, and we've seen various drainage improvements prove beneficial, particularly during Hurricane Ian, Nicole, and even recently during Milton. So this chart looks backwards to the addition of the added crews, as well as serves as a rolling five-year strategic plan. So the dark green is what is completed, the light is proposed with the number of ditch miles at the top per year. And so with current resources, the number of miles achieved has reached a high watermark as it is labor and time-intensive, requires skilled heavy equipment operators and specialized equipment. As the aforementioned improvements have been made, community expectations indicate an ever-increasing and higher demand for service. So to meet, you know, those requests, we would require additional funding and labor for, and equipment from the board. Just to staff up another countywide crew, we would need four staff members, grade all dump truck pickup, that would be a one-point-six-million-dollar initial investment and a recurring four-hundred-thousand-dollar investment unless we are satisfied with the level of service we're providing today. So while not on this slide, but also critical to improving drainage, we're also proactively cleaning culverts and structures using a VATCON equipment that we have, replacing old metal culverts under county roads with concrete as they approach the end of their life expectancy, or in some cases, already failed. And currently have more than forty drainage projects in our engineering shop for design or in, under our construction countywide crews where they're going to be replacing them. So we also recently implemented a policy change last year to clarify code, which ensures private resident culverts are put into proper alignment with the design drainage system when replaced, as it remains one of the most critical drainage challenges we face. So when they come in historically, if you knew how to put a pipe in, you could just put it in yourself. You didn't require a survey, you didn't have to be a contractor. Now, we at least require you have a survey. So if the drainage system is going this way or going this way, yours isn't going the opposite way. Because that is, again, one of our biggest challenges to drainage is, it may be in the right of way, but it's the private residence responsibility by code to maintain and repair their driveway culvert. And we didn't have an effective program until recently.
Can I make a quick comment, and then I'll ask a question?
Sure.
First of all, for the other commissioners, if you haven't seen one of the walking excavator Kaisers in action, next time it's in your district, you ought to, you ought to make a point to go out there and stay out of the way of the mud, but take a look at it. It's a fascinating machine. Mark, if you were just to estimate, how many collapsed driveway culverts do you think there are in unincorporated Brevard County that we have a problem with? And I won't hold you to it, just curious.
I'd be guessing, but I think thousands, any?
I'd guess about at least thirty percent of our inventory countywide. It's a problem for us, so at a minimum, thirty percent of our overall inventory.
But you were talking driveway culverts.
Just residential driveway culverts, I mean.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I've been out to neighborhoods, and I've seen it firsthand. It's not our fault or anything, but, you know, obviously explain to people that.
It's theirs, and they weren't planning a big investment.
Swales and everything, but it doesn't do any good if there's a collapsed culvert under a driveway.
And so typically, what happens is, you know, when we're ready to go into a specific neighborhood, we'll start by inspecting them, we'll issue failed culvert letters. Some of you may know because you've got complaints from your, you know, residents that, hey, why am I being held accountable? And so we work through those, and then we try to do that as we're going in to, you know, upgrade the system. To send out letters, you know, we don't have a staff that is just going and, you know, driving around looking for them, which is why, you know, kind of venturing a guess. But most systems we go into, there are major problems. And so as we can work on them over the next year or two, we go in with the failed culvert letter.
And Commissioner Goodson's got a question. Before he does it, just real quick, what, what kind of money do you think typically a homeowner is looking at for a collapsed culvert repair?
It really depends.
In today's money.
Yeah, it depends on the size, because some are just really small swells.
Double-wide driveway, I mean, two-car width driveway.
It could be, you know, three to five thousand, it could be fifteen to twenty thousand or more, just depending on how big the ditch or canal is that it's spanning.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. Does a homeowner have to be licensed to put a pipe in?
So they don't need to be licensed, but they now?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Delaney.
Thank you. Will you just repeat for me the, what you said about the money, the one-point-something million and the four-hundred thousand?
Oh, yeah, go back to that note. So what I was talking about is, right now, we have three countywide crews.
Right.
We have five different districts. So those three are split to go, you know, where the greatest needs are. But in order to create one more crew, we would need a one-point-six-million-dollar initial investment plus four-hundred thousand recurring. That would provide us one more to float either between several districts or, you know, if the board felt like it was needed, we could do two and have one stationed in each district.
So you're saying that that would get you one more crew, that amount of money?
Right.
That amount of money would get you one more.
Right, that's crew, that's equipment, mostly heavy equipment is the biggest initial cost.
Thank you.
All right. So this is just a continuation of the last. So funding for pipe replacements mostly comes out of our MSTU. We talked about funding sources, you know, a couple of weeks back. But this slide specifically shows the storm pipes that have been replaced, only using them as to you funding. The dark green is actual, the light green is projected in the bottom with the costs at the top of the chart. Additional pipes that cross the road are replaced during resurfacing or reconstruction, and they're not reflected in this. They come out of our maintenance operations budget as part of our road program. The pipes being replaced are typically old metal culverts. In some cases, they could be, you know, for, they could have been there many years. It could be old Grove pipes. But basically, they have reached their end of service life. When we go back in, we put in reinforced concrete pipes so that we can, you know, not undermine the road in the future and have a much longer service life. So aging drainage pipes and failing pipes are being seen at an increased rate, which poses a threat to safety as well as contributes to flooding. Our drainage infrastructure inventory also continues to grow through the new development, engineered drainage improvement projects, and discovery of structures, as I previously mentioned. Switching to another major focus, line of focus for Road and Bridge is sidewalk repairs and replacements. So lifting of sidewalks, usually at the seam or expansion joint, is a major issue for us on public sidewalks and streets, usually caused by trees and often live oaks. The lifting can extend fifteen feet or more from the trunk as root length can easily extend two to five times the canopy size. Where possible, we try to limit removing trees or cutting roots as it leads to loss of tree stability or can affect the tree health. Once the slab is over one-quarter inch, that is a serious public liability as well as safety issue. It presents a trip hazard, a fall hazard, and doesn't meet the American with Disabilities Act. So, which we're going to get into a little bit more in the next slide. For this reason, we don't allow trees to be planted near sidewalks under current code. However, we have an abundance of these issues throughout the county. Often, residents contend that they don't want a tree removed on quote-unquote "their property." But if. but if we're involved, it's typically because it's in the public right-of-way, not private property, and the county is the one that will be ultimately sued. So the chart at the bottom reflects the number of official sidewalk claims that County Risk received and the payouts each year from the County Risk Manager Julie Jones. It's important to properly interpret this data as it can falsely lead one to think that we don't have much exposure. However, depending on litigated or non-litigated claims, it can take between one and a half to five years to materialize and see a payout. As such, you could see a high number of claims in '21 and '22 than in prior years, which tends to foreshadow that costs may far exceed the 2018 peak of nearly $700,000, which obviously could be better spent fixing the issues than paying litigation costs. Additionally, every single case involves countless hours of limited field and office staff assembling info, sitting in depositions, which also can be better to make the condition safe. So continuing on our sidewalk theme for a moment.
Sorry, Mark. Commissioner Goodson's got a question.
On your sidewalk repair, if you do just trim the tree or the tree roots and you re-pour a sidewalk, how long is it before you have to come back and do the same thing again?
Typically every three to five years, and I'm about to get into that.
So why wouldn't you kill the tree?
So that is something that we try to ensure that we're looking at public safety and work with the appropriate commissioners. Sometimes we have vocal residents and if it is an absolute safety issue, we're going to do the right thing, but we also don't want to be accused of needlessly, you know, destroying trees. And so it's a very, it's an emotional thing for our residents and we try to balance that as best we can.
Of course, if you know anything about lawsuits and you have sidewalk repair, milling going on, milling of asphalt against, right there against the same sidewalk repair, you have inlet repair going on at the same time. So you have a multitude of lawsuits. You can have everybody. It'd be a joint lawsuit. Everybody gets sued, right?
And so, you know, if the board wanted to change that direction to only cut, we, we could do that, but we really do have the public's best interest in mind and try to weigh those issues.
But if you cut the roots.
Position, you can only do that so many times before the roots continue to push up the sidewalk and there's no sidewalk to grind. Over two inches usually require sidewalk panel replacement. And at that point, it is not prudent, as I was mentioning, to put a new panel over a tree root. Tree blocks, other methods have not been proven successful over time. The roots just find their way around it. They're attracted to water. So, and as I mentioned, every three to five years, there's a recurring public cost. But again, we are trying to not only look out for our public safety interests, but balance those, you know, citizen concerns. So going back to the last slide where I discussed a quarter inch being an issue, it is not only a safety issue that we need to address, but also an ADA issue. The Public Right-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines, or PROAG, was issued by the U.S. Access Board and implemented in January of this year. But it's been in development since 2001 and was first issued as a final rule in 2013. USDAOT adopted it in December 2024. There is no requirement to retrofit existing facilities that are, that are not undergoing alteration, but it does require us to create an ADA transition plan, which will be in the works this year, which is going to lay out how we would approach things, not necessarily approaching it. And I'll get into more of why in the next slide. So it not only affects sidewalks, but detectable warning surfaces, transition, pedestrian routes, crosswalks, transit stops, passenger loading zones, et cetera.
If I could just throw something out there real quick. I appreciate what you're saying about this and appreciate what you're saying about the, the trees and the sidewalks and whatnot. Never did I expect myself to be a person who talks about trees so much in my life. But my district is extremely concerned about what their, about their lifestyle, their quality of life, all of that stuff. And if public safety was truly the thing that everybody's concerned about, I would think that we wouldn't have let our fire department get to the state that it's in. Because I think that we have a lot more liability when it comes to that than we do somebody tripping on a sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next slide. So the Sidewalk Repair and Replacement Program. So in anticipation of the PROAG and growing calls to enhance our public safety along pedways and sidewalks, as well as address trip hazards, we briefed the prior board and laid out this sidewalk repair and replacement program. And so this, much like the others, is a rolling five-year strategic plan. The reason why, unlike the others, where I don't show a long history is because we just briefed it last year and we're just now implementing it. So we are diverting $4.8 million of the funds we've already discussed, our gas taxes, our general fund allotment, our MSTU, over the next five years to address sidewalks. And, you know, it is much needed, but it's only making a modest dent towards a much larger issue. So the county has 734 miles of sidewalk and we roughly estimated at least 30% need repair or replacement at a cost of $35 million. So each year, the board accepts new sidewalks. It also accepts new risk as our inventory continues to fall into disrepair. But we needed to start somewhere and that was what could we live with within our existing budget to make some sort of modest improvement. But if the board wanted us to expand this, we would need an additional funding source. So we recommend, you know, an additional recurring annual amount to be funded at $2.1 million of dedicated funding so that over the next 20 years, we can actually close the gap. And if you recall during my last brief, we, you know, I provided a number of different funding options that could help towards this. It wasn't just capacity, it was also for maintenance and safety projects, which I'm not going to, you know, go back into. So the funding notionally would be distributed countywide based on the sidewalks in each district. But it's important, important to note that Districts Two and Four have the most sidewalks. They encompass 70% of the sidewalks in the entire county. So shifting to service requests received. So we're currently, for service requests, our goal is within 72 hours, we go out there and we investigate the issue. If we can actually triage it and resolve it, we resolve it. If not, we then schedule work. That is occurring 84% of the time. The total calls for 2024 were 4,845. To date though, in, in the last three months, we're at 1,401 calls, which means that if you just extrapolate, we're currently exceeding 16% over our calls last year with the existing staff and existing funding. So while we actively perform metrics on investigating service requests, much like we do in many of the other areas within Public Works, we're also working on improving our SOP for follow-on work to improve scheduling, both in and outsourced work, as well as communicating using process improvement techniques such as Lean Six Sigma. We actually have two projects going on right now. So each district receives a different number of service requests and for different types of issues due to the different geography, geographic infrastructure, and we're going to get into that real briefly on the next slide. So on this slide, most of the complaints, as you can see, we have a number of different categories and these are the just, the most prominent categories, not all of them. But if you look at ditch maintenance, if you look at drainage, if you look at flooding, those are all drainage-related. And so clearly, you know, you know, we're the Road and Bridge program within the Public Works Department. You know, sometimes I think it should be the Road and Drainage Department because we spend more time on drainage than probably any other issue. So as you can see, we have, you know, quite a bit of, you know, just on this data over, just over a year period, quite a bit of drainage issues that we've responded to. The other one that we're going to get into later on, just to make a quick point, is dirt roads and our challenges there. And I won't spend any more time now. When we look at our equipment, we have large, heavy equipment, costly equipment. And so this slide represents our Heavy Equipment Fleet Manager's five-year equipment plan based on the tight usage hours and taking into account industry standards. He, along with Susan and myself, review this each year based on funding, emerging needs. We make adjustments based on funding availability, always looking to meet or exceed our critical needs. The different colors represent the types of equipment. Where the total on the top is what is needed to meet the plan, the gray is the projected funding available. The average heavy equipment can cost $500,000 to $800,000 per piece of equipment. So balancing our needs is essential. And over the last three years, you could see that the funding line is lower than the total stack bars, meaning that, you know, we've continued to invest about 1.85, 86 million per year in equipment, but that is insufficient. And over the next five years, we would need an additional four and a half million dollars to meet all of the needs that our equipment plan says. So when funding isn't available, what that means is that we just need to make the equipment last longer. And so due to harsh environments based on roadwork, saltwater, brackish ditches, keeping a lot of our equipment outside pays a toll. And over the last three years, we've averaged $667,000 in equipment repairs because we weren't able to get a new piece of equipment. This number continues to increase based on inflation and at an increase of outsourcing repairs due to high vacancy rates and limited heavy equipment mechanics.
I have a question. So it's mostly about the pickups. I understand that you need different sized trucks for different towing capacities and whatnot. But say like the F-150s or, or the Chevy 1500s. Those, are they being used for towing or are they being used for just getting around, throwing stuff in the back of the bed, that kind of stuff?
So I couldn't tell you specifically, but you know, our heavy equipment manager looks at what the need is, looks at what we have. If we can replace an aging vehicle, we look to do that, not necessarily grow our fleet, and then looks at the uses and tries to appropriately select which one. But I, I could certainly get back to you, but I couldn't stand here and tell you.
I guess the question that I'm asking is, is that are there, are, are there necessarily needs for that size of a truck? Or could you guys do some cost savings and go with like a Colorado if you just needed the bed space versus for towing?
Right. So I believe we're already doing that, but certainly we can take that back in and ask the question and see if that's something to consider.
Thank you.
I think sometimes they just pick up a road sign. I mean, there are some things like that. You don't necessarily, I mean, I, I notice, you know, sometimes in parking lots because I'm, I'm, I just, I look for screws and things like that. So I always are looking at, you know, if you don't have a, if you don't have a hitch that you're riding around with pretty much full-time, you're, you're probably not pulling a trailer that often. But they do, they do have some smaller trailers out there that they certainly could tow. So I'm, I think there's quite a mixture, even when you go out to Road and Bridge. You don't see a lot of pickup trucks that, that I think they're pulling stuff. I mean, I've seen them with dump trucks pulling a good-sized trailer. So they're usually, usually heavier trucks, I think, for that kind of thing.
Question. Do you, are you mandated to buy under the state contract, which the state contract might identify certain categories of trucks?
So I, I don't believe it's mandated. We have county policy that we look to Chevy so that this way we, we can, you know, limit the numbers of training and equipment and parts on hand. And the county has a contract, I believe it is leveraging the state contract and I'm looking to.
Is it, Frank?
Yeah, I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Could you get it for the board?
Sure.
Thank you.
And the reason why I ask about the towing stuff is because I know that in recent years, a lot of the trucks have gotten pretty expansive with their towing capacity. So that's the only reason why I bring it up. Like a 250 now is doing the job of the 3 and 450, you know, five, 10 years ago.
Okay.
You know, so that's, that's the only reason why I was wondering.
Look at it.
Thanks.
Okay.
You have, you have a, almost a Napa store in the Road and Bridge shop, right? That's basically your vendor.
So we do for heavy equipment, but you're talking Central Fleet.
Yeah.
Which is under Central Services. They handle all the white equipment. So as a department, we budget and, you know, are responsible for it, but ultimately they're the ones maintaining it and there's a cost allocation plan for their service.
I mean, there's a point where it makes a lot of sense. I've certainly talked to, you know, fire quite a lot about trying to keep the same drivetrain in, in their vehicles and it's, it's getting harder as, as one manufacturer doesn't, doesn't exist anymore. And, but it makes a lot of sense. It's the same drivetrain all the time. So I, I know that's a situation with, with our fleet too. Thank you.
Okay, switching, so emergency management within Public Works. So this by no way is, you know, not taking anything away from the firefighters and their plight, but I did want to make a larger point here about our own blue-collar workforce. So we start workers at $16 an hour. That's, you know, coming from the outside, that is working eight to 10 hours a day in the hot Florida sun many times. And quite frankly, they could work at McDonald's or Walmart for roughly the same amount and not have those same stresses. We have a high vacancy rate, particularly in our blue-collar workforce, Road and Bridge, facilities and traffic. Because of this and also what we're told, as I mentioned last time, from folks that pass on us is because of the pay. And in some cases, it could be 25% to 50% under what contractors and other municipalities are paying. But specifics of emergency management, I wanted to just highlight some of the things that we do in this category. So let me start out by saying back in 2003, President Bush issued a presidential policy directive and Policy Directive Eight officially recognizing Public Works as first responders. So just now three weeks ago, the, our state legislature, linking back to the 2003 presidential directive in the Florida House under House Bill 341, sought to create ID cards for Public Works identifying them as first responders. And each year in May, we celebrate Public Works as a larger, not just our department, but Public Works to include utilities, solid waste, natural resource management, and mosquito control departments. So this picture on the screen is all hurricane-related to underscore some of our greatest documented work, but is just one of many because we respond nightly and weekends to power outages, to leaks, to drainage issues, to significant rainstorms and wind, and even traffic accidents, along with our firefighters and our police. Often considered the silent arm of public safety and usually without fanfare, we monitor water elevations year-round or organize around continuity of operation plans. We prep and maintain drainage conveyance systems, pumps, and roads before, during, and after storms, respond to hurricanes and other disasters, move trees to restore power, clear paths for police, firefighters, and FPL. And in years past, our Road and Bridge team even maintained the line when brushfires encircled our county. So we're often first to respond, but almost always last to leave after a major event for our facilities, road, and traffic, which could take days and sometimes weeks to restore. So, you know, humbly asking that our staff, our blue-collar workforce, our junior staff also be considered when we're looking at, you know, increases to the fire department.
If I could, I'm sorry. One of the things that I'd be interested in us talking about and seeing how we could look through is maybe some incentives for people who do these jobs. Because like Mark said, you know, they're, I believe they're part of our public safety team as well, for sure.
You can join me in sponsoring their next Public Works annual picnic. I did that last year and I was very happy to do that. I greatly respect our Public Works folks who go out there. And I stood there and I told them that I appreciate that the work you do keeps our county moving every day. So you're welcome to join me in that. Will it be in the Lake Spring? It'll be in May?
Are you talking to me?
I'm talking to everybody.
Oh, okay.
Just, just, I was going to ask each of you to help me do that sometime later, but since you're bringing that up, I'll take the opportunity. And we had it at Wickham Park. It was a nice day. I don't think it's enough, but it was nice to be, to be a part of and for them to get together for lunch. Anyways, I, I share your view and I respect Public Works very, very much.
All right. So moving on, this is just a continuation of emergency management. But one of the items that I mentioned in the last slide is year round monitoring. So you may be surprised to know that our Roden Bridge employees take hours to drive around the county, sometimes one to two times a day, especially during hurricane season, taking them off other critical tasks to manually read 53 staff gauges strategically placed around the county, as well as localized rain gauges and pumps, stations at Legay and Cocoa, Deer Run in Palm Bay, Hall Road and Pine Island on Merritt Island, in addition to numerous private pumps, critical to bringing down water levels during large rain events. This info, this info of water levels, flow direction, velocity, rain amounts, and wind direction are vital, not only to our operation of how best to respond and where to surge assets, but countywide decision making, such as whether to start sandbag operations in advance of an approaching storm and where there is widespread flooding as decisions to reopen are made. Using one-time COVID funding, PW in cooperation with Natural Resources recently awarded a $750,000 contract to place remote telemetry stations at approximately 20 of the total 53 locations. So this is a start for PW and Natural Resources as we want to continue to build this network, to eventually build it out, to replace all these manual stations, but also to eventually add remote operators to our pumps, as currently there's a gap in our ability to respond. Once the wind, let's say in a hurricane, reaches 40 miles per hour, that could last 24 or more hours. We're, you know, behind doors at that point, and we may need to increase our pump capacity. We may need to turn it on or off, and we can't do any of that. We have to wait until the storm subsides to go back out there and see the aftermath. And so having remote telemetry, as well as remote operators, will be a tremendous boon for our county. So recognizing its criticality and importance, even as we've moved forward, mosquito control has recognized that for their impoundments. Obviously, Hall Road is one of the major locations where we have pump stations and an impoundment, and they have to look towards the future. So based on current negotiations, which is still early on, I'm thinking we need another three to four million dollars to actually foresee this vision, and without it, we'll just continue to piecemeal as we can. Obviously, the COVID injection significantly helped us get a start.
That's a one-time thing or a recurring?
So that is a one-time to put the equipment, but there will be a maintenance charge. We're talking technical equipment that's going to need to be serviced. We're going to have to pay for access to dashboards, but we'll be able to sit in the EOC and know exactly where things are flooding. Where now, we got to go out and wait for someone to drive the whole county to tell us.
What do you think the reoccurring would be, a guesstimate? Because I know you probably didn't get that together.
10%? Susan?
Yeah, that's about right, for the software and the hardware maintenance.
Thank you.
Is that, is that anything that Sorrell could help out with? I guess maybe that's a question for Morris or possibly for Frank. When we talk about infrastructure and, and our waterways, is that, is there any intersection there that?
We have to look into it.
Okay.
Facility upgrades. So this is specifically talking facility upgrades to our Roden Bridge fleet. So as you could see in the pictures, they're aged and in some cases failing. Like many other areas in the county, PW is proud and have historically worked with, you know, what we have, and even fabricating the Cocoa facility ourselves with scrap metal several years ago. These facilities exemplify where funding has not kept pace with costs required to maintain and operate the buildings and overall site to an acceptable standard, instead focusing every limited dollar on the mission of serving our public. Leveraging one-time COVID funding, that all changed approximately a year and a half ago with the county manager and prior board support. So in the pictures on the right, you'll see aged facilities in various districts, all of which are undergoing a master plan to advise what we need now and in the future, and whether the current locations can even sustain them. These studies are fully funded, but nothing else. In District 1, in Titusville, metal buildings leak, support beam structures are rusted and corroded, some storage barns have missing roofs and rusted corroded beams. The roof leaks into the main office building. In District 1 and 2, at the Cocoa Shop, roof and structural beams are corroded with rust. I could go into each one of them, but they're all failing, so I will skip ahead. The furthest along with funding, both a combination of one-time COVID funding and general funding, is at our Wickham Shop. The first two of four phases is funded with $22.3 million, and that is to not only address our needs, but also Central Fleet. So the Wickham Shop, for those that have, you know, traversed Wickham Road over the years, you might remember the purple eyesore that was out in front. We demoed that about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago. And our mechanics work outside now because we don't have a facility. They're working under the lean-tos that we have. But that's what we've had to do in order to get rid of that eyesore. One of the things that we wanted to do was build a state-of-the-art facility for them to work inside, but also our Central Fleet, and co-locate those together. So combined with Central Fleet, we have not only done a full master plan, but we have finished the design, and that is currently out on the street. And we are looking to start later this summer with Roden Bridge to help defray some of the costs, already starting to clear the site if you've been passed there. But then later this spring, they'll actually be digging some of the retention ponds just to help get that project a little bit cheaper and further along. So first to be replaced will be the heavy equipment building that we displaced a number of years ago, and then our maintenance and construction crews. It'll also address longstanding concerns from encroaching neighbors. Currently unfunded are Phases 3 and 4, which is another $18.1 million, which would be to replace our failing pole barns and to protect the millions of dollars of heavy equipment which sits outside, as well as the current office trailer, which is still in decent shape, but to have a plan for the future. And I bring up those costs just to be able to bookend that, you know, with all of our facilities, they may not be as great as, of cost as Wickham. It's one of our larger shops. But we're talking significant investment needs to be done, and we have not planned for that in the past, only in the recent past. We also have some issues at the Valkaria Pit, but we're planning, those are small enough that we're going to handle internally with our current budget.
If I could, I'm sorry. Any of the funding sources that you had mentioned at the last workshop, those could go towards some of these costs as well?
Yeah, they, they can. Again, we've just, in the past, have historically focused every last dollar on the mission and the public.
Right.
Which is noble, but now we're at a state where we have, you know, facilities that are in desperate need of repair.
Absolutely. Right. Thank you.
Let me add, we did check, and there's a potential for utilization of some sort of funding, but it's got to be in the right watershed, right? The Indian River Lagoon watershed can't be in the St. John's watershed. So moving forward, as they revise and update plans every year, if that's what the board's interested in, then Natural Resources can, you know, look at that and discuss it with the Citizens Oversight Committee and all.
There may be also a St. John's grant out there, obviously, we could, we could seek as, as well. Yes, sir. Okay.
Okay. The last Roden Bridge slide. Still have traffic and facilities to go, so don't get too happy. But dirt road, dirt road paving. So finishing out this section, I just wanted to quickly address this. As I mentioned a number of slides back, it presents us a real problem. It's one of the areas besides drainage that we receive a lot of calls on. So a well-maintained dirt road features smooth, graded crown surface with grass holders that sub away from the road and provide effective drainage. The county's dirt roads typically are 18 to 20 feet, consists of two-lane rural roads, a lot of them are old Grove roads that we inherited. To keep these roads in optimal condition, the Roden Bridge maintenance team must frequently grade typically every three weeks by best management practices and repair them as necessary. As I previously showed, calls are frequent, and no one ever seems to be happy with our results. And so we don't have the resources to increase by personnel or equipment and/or more frequently maintain the road, and there's also a negative consequence of maintaining it because the more you work the soil, you break down the structure of it. It becomes less stable, which is susceptible to, more susceptible to weather, more susceptible to traffic. It effectively, effectively becomes a powder. You get ripples, ruts, and potholes. In addition to routine grading, we also rehabilitate a certain number of roads each year. And if we were to grade more frequently, we would have to rehabilitate more. However, I wanted to point out, that work comes exclusively out of our MSTU maintenance budget. And I also showed you last time how that has pretty much been flat for many years. Some roads last much longer based on traffic, you know, less traffic and potentially other issues. And so again, grading would just drive up those costs. Looking at D1 alone, because that's where our greatest number of dirt roads are, if you recall at the beginning, and it's here as well, I mentioned that there's 68 miles of dirt roads for D1 out of 82 miles total, and you could see on the top of this slide the breakout. If we were to just adhere to every five-year rotation of rehabilitating, we would spend over half of the yearly MSTU budget just to do that maintenance, which is obviously not achievable considering all the drainage and other challenges that I mentioned. So I understand that people bought on a dirt road, and that is where they pay taxes, as well as there are arguments out there that some residents even want dirt roads because that's why they moved out there. There's lots of, you know, reasons, both pro and for, and that's not the focus of what I want to talk about. It's that it costs a lot more to maintain, and if we were to consider paving, there's a high initial cost, but it's actually proven to be cheaper over the cost of the road's lifetime than actually continuing to invest the heavy equipment, the personnel, and also, you know, the high volume of calls. So it would take many years, likely exceed $100 million. But, you know, again, financially and objectively, it's something that the board should consider. Osceola has dove into this with both feet and to lower their long-term burden by paving. And so other counties are doing it. Alternatively, I leave you with one final thought on this note, is we should consider alternatives such as divestment of those dirt roads to HOAs, or maybe even increase MSTUs for those that want to stay on a dirt road, because it costs us more to maintain than it does cost us to maintain a paved road.
That's one of the things that I was just about to ask was, some of these people that want their dirt roads, what would be the process, what would that look like for us if, say, we gave the road back to the, to the residents with the understanding that they would?
Well, I think in a lot of cases, Commissioner, you know, there is not necessarily an HOA. Maybe there could be one established.
Right.
You know, we couldn't just give it to Joe Citizen because
Of course.
They'd have to have, you know, the right liability. We would need access easements over it so that the public can still drive it. So there are a lot of considerations, but I'm just trying to throw out that we think beyond, you know, where we've been, because otherwise, my successor in 30 years will be talking about all the dirt road challenges that we still have.
Yeah. It's definitely a conversation that I would like to, before we make any kind of plan, Board, this really affects my district a lot, and there's a lot of people who really love their dirt roads. And where I understand where Mark's coming from, that it's expensive to maintain, maybe there's still a yes in there somewhere where we can talk about giving those residents an opportunity to take over the maintenance and whatnot of those roads if that's what they so choose.
It's just a technical question on that. Is there, is there a way through a special MSTU or something like that for? You have a question, sir?
I do. I've often wondered, have they ever done an assessment of the environmental impacts of non-paved roads? It seems like runoff and sedimentation and silt would be greater with the dirt roads.
Yeah, so we haven't done a full assessment of that, but I believe that you're, you know, accurate in your assessment. We have, however, a couple of years ago, we did a dirt road assessment. It never really was completed because we had some challenges with the consultant, but there's a lot of benefit to paving a road. We got that much out of the report and only paid for what we got out of it.
My ask would be, before we made any kind of decisions as a board, that we do extensive citizen input to this, because this will turn my district upside down if we make a decision without them.
Okay. And, you know, obviously you have the lion's share, but we do have the same challenges in the other districts, just not as pervasive, except for District 4. All right. Switching to traffic. So we have a fairly small traffic operations staff consisting of 30 employees. We have traffic signal maintenance and compensation agreements in place with FDOT and many of the cities within our county. So to name a few of the items maintained, we have over 65,000 traffic control signal or signs and signals, and provide road safety and guidance for that. We also manage 700 intelligent transportation system devices and many more that are listed on this slide. So I'm going to move on to the next slide.
Let's, let's take a five-minute break, okay? 1:30. Can we be back here at 1:30, everybody, please? Thank you.
2:30.
Oh, that was from a distance. Didn't have my glasses on, and there's a glare, glare. There's a glare on the clock. Okay, so 2:30. Commander, just for the sake of things today, how much, how much longer do you think you're presenting? We're just trying to do a little math here.
We had about 22 more slides. So, we're going to do traffic and then facilities, which I know have been a concern of several of you.
Are we in like the half-hour range, you think? Or are we like in the 40-minute range?
Less than half hour.
Okay, all right, sir. You got until 3 o'clock, I think is what I'm hearing from, okay. Go ahead, sir.
My night's free, I'm just saying.
Okay, so, not going to spend any time on this slide, not going to spend much time here for the sake of time. This is just for your situational awareness of what projects we have in the traffic realm. Did want to quickly talk about ITS, make sure you're aware of what it is and why it's important. So, this is the ITS infrastructure master plan, and it was deployed a number of years ago. We're continuing to work on it and refine it. Back in the 2000s, mid-2000s, FDOT installed a fiber optic network, and that really launched what we know today. Why is it important? Because it helps mitigate some of our traffic congestion and capacity challenges. So, we currently have a, we're in the process of developing a five-year plan, and if you look real close, you could see there's different colors. That's not fully built out. That is kind of a snapshot of what the plan would look like.
I have a quick question. None of these cameras record, correct?
They don't.
Thank you. I am 100% against a surveillance state, yes.
I think that's an issue for the state quite candidly, that the amount of storage is the problem. I think I understood that when I worked up there.
Sound right to you, Commissioner Oltman?
Well, it does, and that's a very common question you get in the state. And I've actually been to a lot of the state and local government, it's storage, and also getting caught up in fights, lawsuits, and drama. There's a lot of, it would open a Pandora's box if that data was available. Although, there are times it should be available, like in 9/11, they actually had some of the terrorists on the tapes, I think in Daytona. So, I don't know how long they keep it, but from a law enforcement point of view, there's definite benefit.
I can tell you the state attorney is going to come talk to us about his need to continue to retain video and body cam footage and such. And it's a pretty significant amount of money just to keep that stuff.
Right. So, you know, just to give you a number, to fully build this out, it would, we would need about a $5 million investment. We have continued to work in partnership with FDOT, and also, we have limited funding each year that goes to that in the realm of $200,000. So, that will take many years to build out, but I wanted to throw a number out there so you understood what the vision was and what it would cost to fully implement. On the next slide, so, we have a traffic management center that's theoretically fully funded. It's out on the street now. It's $17.8 million, $8.1 million in grants, but it's going to serve as the brain of the ITS system. And if you look at the picture on the right, that's kind of what it will be, but a more expanded version. And this is actually showing a SpaceX launch both onsite through our cameras as well as what we get to monitor in the traffic operations center currently. And so, this allows us to flush traffic through during major events, but also when we have other issues. And so, once we get the traffic management center built, our plan is to request additional staff. We currently get $300,000 in FDOT grants, which help support our ITS network with three positions, and we'll look to leverage that to get even more people. Right now, if you're not aware, we only monitor this on an as-needed basis. So, there's an accident or a actual space launch, we go and look at it. We don't have staffing that's monitoring this, and that's only during daytime hours. If there's a launch, our people, our people come in after hours. As we continue to grow, there is going to be a need. We're not there yet, but there's going to be a need to be able to look at that 24/7. Real briefly on the traffic congestion management plan. So, you know, traditional road widening mentality was, if we're nearing capacity, if we're over capacity, we need to widen the road. We went into, you know, what those costs are in my last brief, and that, right now, at least under current funding, is, you know, not attainable. So, we've looked in a different direction, and that is looking at specific issues and where could we better manage congestion, optimize infrastructure. It's not a, as well as improved safety, mobility, et cetera. It's not a panacea. It's a mitigation. There's still those same issues, but we could potentially continue to push out further on some of those bigger costs. And so, right now, we have been working on this over a year. We're expecting later this spring to have the results. The map itself kind of shows all of the arterial and collector roads that were evaluated, and then the consultant is going to come up with a series of recommended projects that we could do. We, of course, don't have additional capacity funding. If you recall back to my last briefing, we have a very small discretionary pot, but at least these are hopefully going to be smaller bite-sized and maybe something that our impact fees could fund. This is just a continuation of that. In the interest of time, I won't go into all the details here other than to say that the dots and the red lines are indicative of where we believe the biggest bang for the buck will be, based on the initial results from what we've got from the consultant. There's still work to be done. We're still going to get a bunch of cost estimates and concept plans, and that, as I mentioned, will be sometime later this spring. Traffic safety is also a issue. Brevard County fatalities are not trending down. In fact, they're going the other way. So, we applied for a Safe Streets For All grant. Last year, we were awarded it for $320,000. It's a safety planning grant. Unfortunately, right now, we're on hold pending the federal government's, you know, hold on, you know, pursuing grants. As you might know, there's several EOs out there, executive orders, that freeze those funds. So, we're caught up in that. We're hopeful this is a pretty straightforward bread-and-butter infrastructure project that once the dust settles that this, you know, will get funded and we'll be able to move forward. But, a lot of goodness can come out of this. In order to apply for future federal funds, you need a study like this, and it will provide us a lot of recommendations that we could potentially bite off on.
Is 46 part of this?
Um...
County roads only? County roads only?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, that was traffic. Going to go into facilities now. So, this is the overall summary of facilities. We're going to get into some of the details as we move forward. We currently have 50 employees that directly support 76 buildings, which is 1.8 million square feet. That's the government centers, the county service complexes, the courthouses, public safety facilities, and the detention center. We have two vacancies, one which will be filled next week and the other is actively being advertised. But, just to, you know, point out, we had a high-water mark back in 2008 when this facilities program was a full department of having 23 more staff than we do today. And while we have shrank even since 2008, before it became a full-fledged program in 2014, we also have seven times the amount of work orders than they had back then with the same approximate total top-line staff, which means that we're supplementing a lot with contracting to get the same work done at a higher cost. And based on industry standards, we'd need at least 10 more shop personnel just for our direct support facilities. It's important to note that fire, library, parks, and many other departments, even some of the buildings under my control such as Road and Bridge, fall outside of what we're talking about here today directly, other than the support that we provide them. So, they are budgeted under those programs, or those departments, rather. They're managed by themselves, and then they come to us as a service provider when they need something. So, that, that is 154 buildings at 2.6 million square feet. Again, leveraging same-staff and contractors to help them. Support is in accordance with board policy, which specifically for facility construction mandates that renovations and constructions go through our construction division, although that's not always being done. And then, we also have centralized service contracts, which we'll get into in a moment.
Can I ask a quick question here, Mark? Is it, just, just your opinion, for the future, is it better to rent a facility? For the county to rent a facility that already exists, or to build and, you know, purchase property and build and...
So, traditionally, it is better to own a facility, invest, and, you know, you can manage the cost. On the flip side, leasing a facility, you can have a fixed cost, but you're always paying that in perpetuity. So, over time, you've got to look at the cost benefit, but at some point, you're going to outpace it. You potentially would have newer facilities, but we could also, you know, maintain our facilities better. But traditionally, it's better to own it, but there are a lot of reasons for not doing it.
I know that debate's been around for a while, and it exists even here in the county. I mean, I think in Merritt Island, right, the tax collector doesn't own that building. That's in Merritt Island, right? That's a lease. So, I was just curious for the future if things like that are a better deal.
I have a quick question. For the support, the other departments do pay you guys, right?
Yes. Yeah, so, there's certain percentages that we get, and they reimburse our labor when our maintenance teams go in. And then, there's a certain percentage, depending on the size of the construction project, that we get to help defer some of the construction staff that we have. It's not a lot, but it helps, you know, pay some of that back from those other funds that are using us.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, so, much like the others on this, not going to get into a lot of details because obviously we're running out of time. You could see their biggest area is capital improvements, which I'm going to get into in a moment. So, you know, it's important to note that we have continued to invest in our facilities, especially, you know, in, in the last eight to 10 years. And so, under Frank's leadership, with prior board support, we have continued, if you look at this graph, continued to invest more year over year than we had in the preceding decade. And then, since becoming the director in 2020, again, with Frank's support and the board's support, you could see the trajectory has went up even more as we've realized that we need to get more aggressive on arresting failing or failed vital components as part of our infrastructure. The total in FY '25 is 23.2 million in new funding. That's general fund. It doesn't include balance forward, which I'll get into in a moment. So, on the next slide, this is very important because while we've continued to invest, it also shows that our balance forward on multi-year projects has continued to increase. You could see the light green is the new funding, the darker green is the balance forward. And so, I wanted to address that and what we're doing about it, and then, obviously, if there's, you know, board direction or guidance, we could change. But, you know, currently, we manage 127 projects valued at $100 million. That is not what is reflected here. What is reflected here is just the general fund portion that Public Works has given. But, there is, you know, every department, the constitutionals, that also contribute to using the staff that I mentioned, primarily on the construction side. Over the last five years, we've doubled the construction staff to 10, including adding two construction coordinators, a planner, and a project manager just over the last two years. But, we're only going to reach that realization and be fully staffed next week because as we've had turnover and we continue to, you know, it's a challenging position to recruit for, but we will be fully staffed next week. I mentioned the staff has doubled, but if you could look at the graph, you could quickly see just the dollars for the general fund projects alone, notwithstanding all the other projects, they have tripled in dollars while we've doubled in staff. Additionally, the construction staff is handling larger and more, many more complex maintenance projects and aging, as aging infrastructure continues to accelerate, that increases our workload and stretches their capacity. that increases our workload and stretches their capacity. So today, our construction coordinators are serving both as inspectors and project managers. And by industry standard, we're still at roughly half of what we need to have onboard to manage the workload we have, although we've made great gains. Additionally, as part of our strategy to tackle the increased workload, it's better to plan, and then, we've been shifting over time, under my direction, to a concept of three-to-four-year programming. In the past, we would look at a issue. We would plan the planning, the design, and the construction, all in the first year. We might spread it out over on the CIP plan, but we were tying up a lot of funding. And a lot of times, we got to the end, and between inflation, issues that maybe got worse, better understanding the project, we needed to add to it anyway. So what we're focusing on is, at least for the bigger projects, planning in year zero, designing in year one, maybe year two, and then constructing in year three or four. That way, we can focus on what can we get done with the money quicker that needs to get done, not tie up funds. But that's a, you know, kind of like turning a, you know, large ship. You know, we're working on that. We've had, as I mentioned, a lot of staff turnover. We're closer to that today than we were in the past, because we now have a planner, we now have a project manager, and so we're focusing on those things. Almost equally as important over the last two years is shifting away from bidding every project to other flexible contract solutions. And I know that there's been some concerns on that, so I wanted to just quickly talk about why that's important. And then, on the flip side, if we didn't, you know, there are other costs just to bidding. And I wanted to make sure that if the board were to consider changing direction, that you understood that. So, you know, the old adage of expect what you inspect is very true in the construction world, where our contractors, you know, can cut corners. This is not an indictment of everyone, but it is certainly pervasive in the construction world. So I feel like I need to make this point. You know, we could save money on one project, maybe several projects, but by bidding, but not necessarily for all of them, with the workload that we have and the staffing that we have. And I think misses a larger point, and so I wanted to address that. So, you know, again, we'll work with whatever direction we're given, but there's a lot of different things there. So, right now, we have to consult, especially when we have major equipment, or there's a need for design. But in order to bid, we would need to be more reliant on consulting as one option, because we would need to come up with our specifications and our plans, so that bidding can be done equally. When you have continuing contracts, when you have CM at risk, you're able to go in, you don't need full plans, and you can get a cost. That is very hard in a bidding climate to make sure that you're getting apples to apples. And so, that's one. And traditionally, it costs 8% to 10% of the project to have a consultant. Staffing can be, you know, boost staffing can be another alternative. And after a lot of deliberation over the last couple of weeks with staff, you know, we think that we would need an additional 10 people if we were to only bid at $1.1 million. And that's important to know, it's not just construction, folks. It's project managers, it's CAD techs, it's specification writers and contract techs. Because a lot of times, when we're leveraging contracts like CM at risk and our continuings, we're leveraging their expertise, we're not having to put out specifications. We would need that type of staff to help with design drawings, with contract specifications, and with technical specifications. And so, that's one concern, another concern. I also mentioned, you know, bidding versus CM at risk. Just a quick example, if we took a million-dollar project, and we planned for it in FY '20, but it took us till 2024 to complete, as you could see, the balance forward kind of indicates that it has taken us that long. That same $1 million project now costs us 50% more due to inflation at 1.5 million. So having tools that we can expedite contracts actually saves money, even if they cost more in the now. And so, with few exceptions, I also wanted to note that on our transportation side, we do a lot more bidding than we do CM at risk. But we also have some distinct differences. We have FDOT specs to backstop it. We have professional engineers that manage our projects. And there are still times where we use CM at risk. But even on the large projects that we do, every single one of them has a construction engineering inspection contract, and also additional quality assurance testing, as the commissioner mentioned earlier. And that's 15% to 20% on the backend. So you could save money, because the traditional CM at risk fee is 10% to 20%, but you, either you accept greater risk, or we need to figure out other ways to ensure that we're getting what we're paying for. And so what I'm, you're really just trying to lay out is that we look at that, and we try to make sure we use the right tools. So, another point on CM at risk. So contracts go out for competitive solicitation. They're required to get three quotes for every major item of work, and we only pay the actual expenses. And they provide in return for that fee, which is dependent on the project size, a comprehensive project management, where our representatives can rely on them, because they're an extension of our team. And so, for all those reasons, that needs to be considered when we're looking at contracting tools. And if, it also, by the way, allows us to do owner-direct purchasing, which saves us tax dollars, because we can have them do all the up-and-down lifting, say it's a major piece of equipment, might be an air-handling unit, a generator. They figure out where, what the best one is to buy. They hand it to us, our purchasing buys it. Now we don't pay taxes. So we have a lot of flexibility with that contract vehicle. For low bid, we become the general, or we become the project manager, and they're just the general contractor. So there's a lot of goodness in it. And again, the reason why I'm bringing it up is because our plan is to drive that balance forward down and deliver these critical needs. These are all needs that are three and four years old, and we need to, you know, explore ways to try to deliver quicker. So, switching our focus to just a quick facilities overview. I mentioned some of this already, so I'm not going to deep dive here. But, you know, we have HVAC as our number-one issue. We have a lot of aging infrastructure. So our average facility was built in 1971, which places it at 74 years old. Our roofs average 24 years old, where the typical life cycle is 20 years. HVAC averages 17 and a half years old, although we've made significant investment here, and have driven this number down substantially. The typical life cycle is 20 years. And then, for elevators, which we'll get into as far as breakout in a moment, 22 of 31 need to be modernized due to obsolete parts. So we have a $71.8 million unfunded need to address all of these facility backlog issues. Similar to the other slides that look like this, I'm not going to get into the details in the interest of time. These are just some big projects in each district. I've alluded to this throughout my brief, but cost escalation continues to be a real thing. Here, we show construction square-foot costs over the, you know, the last number of years. From 2017 to 20, there was only a 9% increase. However, since 2020, we've seen a nearly 50% increase in our facility costs. Excuse me, service contracts are at the bottom, and you could see each of those are substantially more than the 3% cap that is on our budget each year, which just squeezes what we can achieve each year. This is just a listing of the service contracts. Again, not going to go into a lot of details. It lists some of the things that we do, specific for the maintained facilities, and then also for the facilities that we help oversee. We do a lot of the direct contracts, such as fire and other life safety. We also even have a contract at the Veterans Memorial Cemetery. So, major issues and focus elevators. So, mentioned 22 of 31 are beyond their lifespan. We estimated that we need $5.9 million of additional funding over the next eight years. That includes a 3% annual increase to meet code changes. This is not to make the elevators look pretty. This is just the control boards, the door operating mechanisms, which are obsolete, and per recent code, must be changed out. And so, the only place that we have done interior cars is at the six-story. We did three of them several years ago. So we have quite a bit to do. Our plan is to attack seven elevators, or nearly $1 million a year dedicated to elevator modernization over the next several years. And then, in the final year, do eight to finish out the total number we need to do.
Is it true there is no fourth elevator in the six-story?
I believe there's three.
Did you know that? There's no fourth elevator? The little Brevard County factoid for you. In a building that was built, what, in the 50s? Probably 60s, somewhere in there, anyways.
So, you know, one last thing on this is that because of the new code regulations, I mentioned that we're largely upgrading control boards, door operators. In 2024 alone, we had four boards fail. Under the previous code, we were able to make customizations, and then get those in service. If they fail, based on the new code, we cannot put them in service. We need to actually make the replacement. So this is going to be pretty sticky over the next several years. I mentioned the plan of $1 million a year, and taking six years, we may need to accelerate certain elevators if we find ourselves maybe, you know, not just at six-story, but other locations where we have less than three elevators. So HVAC is our number-one challenge, as I mentioned. And we've made significant gains in this area, but still have a lot to do, as I mentioned a couple of slides back. Our location, because of the heat, because of, you know, being near the water, decreases their lifespan considerably. And right now, we have $7.9 million budgeted, and those projects are in various states. You could see here, we've completed a number of them in '24. We have a number in 2025. However, we have $8.3 million of known unfunded issues on our unfunded infrastructure list, just on HVAC today. So we have two chillers that are past life expectancy. We have seven more that will be needed in the next five years. We have 13 cooling towers, averaging 11 years. Six of them are past their life expectancy. We are in the process of soliciting for a maintenance management system. And the connection there is to better track and manage, not just the services, but also when we do it, how often, and also our assets. And here at Viera, we are in the process of replacing 89 air-handling units that were 14 years past their life expectancy. Another major focus area is the detention facility. So obviously, located in District 1, in 2006 was their newest facility, which was the tents, which have a 25-year lifespan. Our maintenance shop plus of six, plus dedicated construction coordinator for Viera, is there near full-time. Our team is on-call, responds to issues in the jail 24/7. They're locked in during emergencies such as hurricanes. The detention facility currently comprises 49.45% of our entire facility's CIP budget, because of so much deferred maintenance in years past. The current jail CIP is $14.8 million. Many of the projects which began in 2022, but as I alluded to before in my contracts discussion, they were budgeted at $8.4 million. And so you could see, just we've lost time value of money. Those issues have got worse, and so now they're $14.8 million. So we are continuing to look for ways to be more efficient and to deliver quicker. The renovation team, we have focused on parks. That was the reason for deciding to build a in-house renovation team last fiscal year. And so we've quickly expanded to also include contractors, as we've quickly recognized that even the team that we built could not get as many parks done. And now, as we've seen more recently, we have worked on a number of office renovations. And if you've seen, if you've been on the second floor of this building, we actually started a restroom renovation back on February 10th, because that has been a growing concern. That we'll get into in a little bit. So, right now, because we're working on other stuff, we don't believe the FY '20 list at the bottom will fully get done. But we are working to try to ramp up our contract base to help supplement our in-house staff and try to meet that goal. But our contractors have been much harder to nail down. They've cost us an average of 38.45% more, and they've taken double the time that our in-house staff has done. So we're continuing to also look at opportunities to build up that in-house renovation staff, especially as we look if we're going to continue to renovate our other facilities within the county. The other thing that's important to note, besides just those, the park restrooms, right now, would be finished if we complete our plan by FY '30. But by then, because of the high traffic, the vandalism, wear and tear, we'd be cycling all over again. And so there is really a need to continue having, you know, such a team. So restrooms, I mentioned that we started, that we, you know, started here on the second deck on February 10th. That was allow us to work out some of the kinks. The second deck is, floor is not used as much as the first and the third floor. It allowed us to get in there without causing as much disruption, kind of figure things out. Right now, we're estimating about $100,000 per pair of restrooms for us to do it in-house. And that goes up substantially if we were to contract it. It also would disrupt our staff during work hours. So we've been able to flex our in-house team after hours, coming in early, at a much easier way to get that work done, without, you know, hearing lots of chipping and hammering, where if we had contracts, we'd have to write that explicitly, that they have to work around us, and that would even drive up the cost more. The other thing that we've tried to do, really learning from the park restrooms that we have done, is standardizing materials. We mentioned it earlier on, heavy equipment and regular equipment. But having that in bulk keeps costs down. It saves on procurement time. It provides adequate attic stock, so in case repairs are needed. And also, what we have looked at, and we've installed, is tested and proven vandal-resistant dividers and other things, so that this way, we can hopefully get more time out of our investment. And we're also looking at doing Building A right after this. But we do have a $900,000 unfunded investment, if the board so chooses for us to do all the restrooms just in the Viera Complex Buildings A, B, and C only. And as I mentioned, to accelerate that, that would require contracting support. And so depending on what level of investment, we could pull that in, or that could take longer. But to do a major renovation like that is very time-consuming. Another thing that has been brought up by some of our residents a number of times is just how our buildings look. So we looked at, for presenting at the, you know, at this meeting, you know, what would it take if we replaced all the flooring in our primary walking areas? Only looking at Buildings A, B, and C. Right now, our current flooring is 19 years past its life expectancy. The glue's breaking down. There are stains all over the place, even after we bring in professionals to try to clean it, which is obviously still unsanitary. A lot of the other charter officers and other agencies have moved to luxury vinyl planking, such as the Clerk's Office, the Public Defender, MJC. We've done that in a number of the areas. It has a higher initial cost, but it's visually cleaner, longer. It's more durable for high traffic, easier to sanitize and maintain if we were to have another COVID outbreak or other, you know, disease-related issue. And it's also resistant to stains. So, again, carpet is cheaper, but we would recommend with LVP, if we were going to do this, to keep the cost down, we would be primarily looking at the main corridors in all of our buildings. And then, we could also do kind of raceways inside our office spaces, but leave the cubicles in place with the existing carpet for another time, because that would even make this even more costly if we had to move everyone and replace carpet. This would be... This would be a multi-year process to do, and there's a $2.6 million unfunded to do that if the board so chose. And I just wanted to just real quickly, because I know I'm jumping quicker because, you know, we wanted to get this done. One of the things I don't think I really nailed down on one of my previous slides, it's not that we didn't know that some of these things needed to be done, it's that we have been focusing on critical infrastructure that has been failing, such as HVAC and other components, the envelope of buildings, roofs. And so it would be my recommendation professionally that we would not do this in lieu of all that. This would need to be additional funding that the board would find. If we were directed to do so, we will. But again, you know, we have failing buildings, and we're trying to catch up on that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, Commissioner.
The 2.6 million, is that with or without the moving of the cubicles and stuff?
Without moving of the cubicles. We would basically, if you think of like our space and many of the other departments, you know, there's kind of a walkway around everything. We would just do those walkways, call them a raceway, but leave those center aisles for a future date. Generally, those carpets have been walked on less because they were under, you know, as part of a cubicle, it's really the main raceways that are, you know, in bad condition. So facility conditions and space concerns. So we have seen a 23% increase in work requests this past year. And right now, in FY '25, we've already seen a 51% increase just in the first quarter, based on where we were the previous year. That's because even though we are aggressively attacking those failed and failing components, we're still having issues. And while we're making now what I would say is a reasonable investment, if we didn't have such a large deferred maintenance program, we're still catching up. And so that's going to take some time before we could see that level out. So one of the notes, just circling back to, I may have mentioned that we're doing a CMMS, Computerized Maintenance Management System. Right now, we're only tracking 25% of the workload effectively. And so that system is going to really help us better track. And then we'll be able to also manage and measure our efficiency much better than what we do today and be able to have a greater idea of staffing needs or if we have the right combination. So current staff is not able to keep up with work, which is why we are relying more on contractors to perform that. And then just a quick note on facility conditions. So we have not performed a general facility condition assessment in our buildings. What this is, is looking at, if we simply look at the deferred maintenance that we have identified over the plant replacement value, we believe that we're at a fair facility condition assessment. You could see in the middle of the page, you know, that's kind of a nomenclature in the facility world. It shows you where you would score out, and it's probably fairly reflective of where we're at. You know, we do have some buildings worse than others and some much better. But that was to just really see kind of where we were at. But again, unlike, like with pavement condition, we don't have a proactive plan, and there's a reason for that. We have been spending every last dollar trying to fix the critical infrastructure that we already know about. But again, like I talked about last time, that are, those are known issues or issues that fail, and then we address. We don't have that plan to see what are we not, what do we not know about? And then this is the final slide. So, you know, we mentioned throughout the presentation, aging infrastructure. There's growing backlog, constrained resources. We have aging and failing buildings, bridges, sidewalks that are growing concerns, drainage. And, you know, we need to continue to invest in that to try to stay ahead. We have capacity shortfalls, which I talked about in the last brief. The community continues to grow, but we have not necessarily remained commensurate with that growth. Employee attraction or retention, I mentioned, you know, several times, that is a continued challenge. But we have not just sat there. We have put in place specifically for Public Works, a focused recruiter, and we'd be far off today had we not had her. But we're also, it's a challenge based on current pay. We've worked on career ladders. We've worked on succession planning. We've had internships with both the school board as well as FIT and looking at other training partnerships, such as Brevard Career Sources, I mentioned. Cost escalation continues to be an issue. Mentioned a number of times in different areas that, you know, we continue to outpace the 3% cap. The construction industry continues to boom, and that's a challenge. It just means that we're getting less work done. I mentioned also our consultant and contractor base. Not all, but many are slow or unresponsive. Requires heavy government quality assurance to make sure we're getting what we pay for. Goes back to the adage I mentioned about measure or expecting and measuring. And it's typically four to six times the in-house cost. Continued commercial and residential development. I talked about how, you know, it's not just roadways, four and a half miles a year, it's sidewalks, it's gutters, it's drainage, et cetera. And, you know, the staffing has not necessarily kept pace with that. Right now, some of that is new, but in five years or 10 years, there's a significant amount of infrastructure that we're going to, you know, we haven't necessarily kept pace with financially as well as resources to address that. And then my last point, cities continue to take tax base through annexations. We don't have a way to stop that that would require state legislation. But they leave the roads to us, especially, you know, county roads, they take right up to it. And that is a continuing challenge, not just in maintaining our roads, but also, you know, they're heavily traveled in many cases, and we're not collecting anything for it. So that is it, short of any questions.
Before we, before we go there with questions now, I know you had something in here about revenue generating options. Are, do we want to discuss that here real quick before we get to questions? Or is that for another day?
So I, if you recall, I spent a number of slides in the last brief on them. Happy to revisit that right now if the board wants.
Okay, if we've already been through that, okay. Okay.
Those were the different surtax and discretionary taxes.
Okay, I think I remember that. Other final questions for Mark?
I have a question about what you were just talking about. If, I didn't know when or what or how is the process for us as a board to talk about if any of these things are things that we would like to talk about? And if you could tell me that process?
I, I would think that maybe at the end of the budget workshop process, because I'd imagine that would probably be a big theme. So it won't be just related to infrastructure, just the needs.
In general.
In general. So I, that's my two cents on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Atkinson.
Just one question. What is the percentage of vacancies that you have in your department?
So right now, we have 18.5%, which is down substantially from where, when we started. I think we are doing the best we can, you know, considering the challenges. There is, it's not just pay. There's, you know, obviously many other issues, but that's a continued theme from people that we interview and pass on us.
I have in my notes here, when we talked about this, that you had a 26% vacancy rate?
No, I probably was talking specific, I think, to Roden Bridge at that point.
Okay. But overall, it's 18.
Overall, yeah. So Roden Bridge, specifically, our blue-collar workforce is our worst. We have others that, you know, are either without vacancies, and so overall, we're at 18.5%.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Altman, sir, you have a question?
Just a little, maybe a little discussion. I'm fascinated with the fair facility condition assessment as a result of the formula that you presented for the facility condition, calculating the facility condition index. I had a question. So we have a unfunded infrastructure list totaling over $71 million. And then you divide that by current cost replacement, which is 1.1 billion. Explain that a little bit, how that formula works and sort of the methodology behind that.
Right. So first, it's a standard formula that's used in industry. So we're, you know, looking to others that have already, you know, figured this out. The top number is the known issues that we have. It is the same number that I had shared during my last brief, specifically for the facilities unfunded. The bottom number, we looked at, if you recall, I mentioned what the dollar per square foot was currently for new construction. So that is the best approach in looking at what the current replacement value is, what would it take to replace a building? So we looked at the total square footage of our 1.8 million square feet. We multiplied it by that number, and that's how we got to that number.
So I guess to make it simple, let's say you had a home that's valued at $500,000, and you had unfunded needs. That was $100,000. That would be 20%. That'd be, you'd be in bad shape.
Right.
This is 0.06% of the total value. So although 71 million sounds like a big number, and it is, but compared to 1.1 billion is, we're not in quite as bad a shape as we.
Right. And that's why, you know, we went just by the math. It shows fair, which is not as bad as poor, but we certainly have some of those facilities as well.
So a question I have, we're not weighting those. Some problems are bigger than others, right? If you have stains in the carpet, you might be able to live with that. But if you have mold in certain buildings, you can't live with that.
Right. When we know about mold, we will do an indoor air quality test with a consultant, and then we'll make the necessary repairs.
But this formula doesn't weight things based on the severity of a problem. It's strictly a linear numeric value. Like if you have an air conditioner's about to break or a roof that's leaking, that's going to be worse than some of the cosmetics. I wonder if there's any procedure by which you could rate the severity of the facility problems to determine your facility condition index?
So not just the facility condition index from what I've seen, but in my former life as a Navy civil engineer corps officer, we did condition-based maintenance management, and we looked at those things. So there's techniques out there. I think, you know, with our staff, we would need a consultant to help us. But you're then looking at components, you're trying to stay ahead of that curve, and there's actually, you kind of divide a chart up of your most critical facilities by your least critical facilities, and then your urgent issues such as envelope, you know, building envelope and, you know, other things. And so to your point, you may have a high critical facility but a low issue. And so there are mechanisms out there to evaluate that. This was really just meant to just be a quick snapshot to see how are we, how are we doing just based on, you know, the numbers that we had in-house?
Interesting. That's very interesting. Thanks.
I think, can I say something? You know, the courthouse, you know, we're going to spend some money over here, the Vera courthouse, to get them a jury-capable room, another hearing room, a larger jury assembly area. And that came by way of some money from the legislature. We put some money toward that too. But I was pretty forceful in the idea that Melbourne needs, Melbourne courthouse, and while it's old, it needs to be fully utilized. And so they are doing juvenile down there, and so it is being used more. But Mark could tell us maybe real quick, to do that and to kind of bring that up to full speed, I mean, we needed to do some elevator work down there. And also, we replaced the whole HVAC system, right? So might not have been something that was on the.
I'm going to skip to.
Yeah, Skip could probably tell us.
We've done significant work. We've completed significant work on the HVAC system at the Melbourne Courthouse. We've renovated the second floor, and the elevator is now remodeled or the mechanical components of it have been replaced as well. So we have not fully renovated the first floor yet. The clerk has worked a lot in her areas, but as far as the courtrooms, they have not been renovated yet, and they're dated.
As well as the whole outside and the building of, not just appearance, but ensuring that we have watertight integrity.
So that's an older building, but we're back to utilizing that quite, quite a bit more. Also, the state attorney and the public defender is up there, and they basically had left prior to juvenile. So on the second floor of the courthouse, you did some build-out work there, right, to get them what they needed?
Yes, sir. The second floor, we, when we did that, we also set up designated areas for the public defender, for the state attorney, and for the clerk. And each space has different access controls to keep everybody separate as they need.
So not the pretty things, but, you know, all the mechanical stuff they need. I joke with the clerk, because they said the clerk's area had been kind of updated. I always tell her, I said, "I can tell where you've been because it looks like pottery, looks like a Pottery Barn ad when I go in there." So if you go in the Melbourne courthouse, you know her area.
And to add to that, you know, looking at longer term rather than short term, we did extra things and different things outside of the courthouse so that what was done with the money that the state gave would let that facility last significantly longer in terms of its useful life and what we would need there. And I believe, and I don't remember the exact number, but it was over $2 million that we, was it not, that we added between what we did up north and down south so that we could do what we have done at the courthouse?
I can get you the exact numbers, but it was a very significant amount in that area.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to point that out. Okay, is, Mark? That's it?
Thank you.
Everybody? Thank you very, very much.
I just, I just wanted to say, Mark, that I really appreciate everything that you can do. I know that you guys do so much with so little, and I just, that needed to be said out loud. So thank you, and your whole team.
All right. Let's, let's take another five-minute break before we bring up the man in the pink suit. Okay? All right. Very good. Let's get...
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we consider, or if I don't get a second, or I hope I do, ending this at five and rescheduling what's left because staff has been here, some of them, since seven and they have a home life to go to. And it ain't like we're going to make any world-renowned decisions tonight. So do I have a second or not?
I'll second that.
I have a second? Okay. Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Sounds like... Altman, you missed the most important vote. I'm sorry. But I threw an aye in there for you.
It was the district by budget.
So it was five to nothing.
The...
So if you can finish by five, sir, we will stay through your end. That doesn't mean make it over five. Thank you.
I think if we let Ian get started, you might be surprised happily. Sir?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I am going to try and go quick. So appreciate the opportunity to come here and talk to you. Little bit of fast facts about the department. When you go through this, this is, especially that last bullet, is really the significant one I want you to take away from this, is the sheer number of people that we can actually count who use your Parks and Recreation facilities throughout the county. These are people who are registered in our internal programs and through our rec partners and instructors. This does not count the two to three times this number that probably just drop into our parks to use the playground, to use free time at the gym, those type of things. So Parks and Rec is broken up into two functional areas. Parks and Recreation and Eels. We'll be going over each one of these as we go through the presentation. Again, department funding, budget of about 101 million. This is to give you an idea of where that funding is coming from. About 16 and 1/2 is general fund. Special revenue funds, we'll get into on the next slide. Balance forward, we'll have another slide just for that. And then charges for services, fees, that's things like facility rentals, campgrounds, those type of things. So as you look at the funding sources in those special revenues, those are MSTUs. We've tried to break it up by district area or by north, central, south and eels. So eels, you'll notice, is mostly, is just bond and debt. The others are a mixture of some debt, some MSTUs, some special rec districts. And again, as we get into each of those areas, we'll talk about this a little more in depth. So this is taking those special revenue districts and showing you in the balance forward what that is. You'll see that general fund in our balance forward is a very small amount. That is actually a mixture, we use that for some CIP projects in the north area with a mixture of some special revenue funds. But debt out of that 49 million is a little over eight. Bonds are a little over seven and 1/2. MSTUs about five and 1/2. And then again, those special rec districts are about 12.3. Miscellaneous is actually interest, facility rentals, some of those other things that I spoke to. This is giving you an idea of what our expenses are. As a department, you'll see that our salaries and benefits is kind of a mixed green because if you remember, general fund was about 16 and 1/2 million. Salaries and benefits is about 22.2. And so it's a mixture of that general revenue and some of those special revenue sources. We wanted to break out the pink, like, operating expenses typically is all rolled together with contracted service utilities. All of that is rolled up. We wanted to give you an idea of what some of those breakouts are and how expensive they actually can be for the department. Repair maintenance, 5.6 million. That is the normal kind of things breakdown. We try and fix them that aren't in our CIP to keep the operations running, but it also includes when we have, for example, vandalism. We actually just had an example of that in the north area just this past Monday at Scotts more Landing where somebody shot up the signs, broke chains, tore down wooden poles, did a bonfire with the poles and then also drove ATVs through the grounds themselves. And so that's where repair and maintenance would come in. We'd be going out and doing those repairs. We get a hold of law enforcement. We've talked to the sheriff in that instance and, you know, it's about increasing patrols, but that is something that occurs at a lot of our parks. CIP also is a large portion of our balance forward and Mark spoke to that, so I'm not going to. Here, you get an idea of the department staffing. A total of 354 employees. 299 are full-time, 55 are part-time. You have a breakdown between who are administrative, who's recreation and who's maintenance. Since the question came up, we run about a 22% vacancy rate. So we actually supplement under contractual services through a temp agency to fill in those holes as we try and look at that turnover and address it. And to give you an idea, just I think last week, we had a electrician who was just hired, hadn't been here for very long and left to go to the private sector making almost double what we pay. Here is that same idea of staffing broken out by each of those areas. And if I didn't mention it, NAPo is north area parks operations, central area parks operations, south area park operations. And you'll see that other than eels and for the most part, north area, everything else is that mixture of general fund. The exception in north area is Manatee Hammock Campground where they're kind of considered an enterprise fund where they support themselves. And then eels, which is supported by their bond. So this gives you an idea of where we are on our debt service for those referendums that have happened over the years. Miscellaneous is typically interest. The statutory reduction is actually required by statute. If you're interested, it's 129.1, 1C. And that is required to be set aside on everything but balance forward and transfers. Slide 11 is giving you a kind of a visual of where that debt is based on area. 12, a brief look at what our inter-local agreements are with different agencies throughout the county. We have one with the school board. It has an expiration in 33. You also have a breakdown of where those 10 facilities are by area. Titusville is in perpetuity and then City of Rockledge and City of Cocoa. And I know I'm going fast, but if you do have questions, I'm happy to stop and address them.
You're doing wonderful.
So 13 is a little bit busy. We're trying to give you an idea of where our CIP projects have been. So you'll see in, from 17 to 24, the number based on a breakout of types of project. And so we've also then broken it out by those different areas and then how much was spent in each of those areas for those items. So I will, just because it stands out, athletic field lighting, north area, there were zero and zero expenditures. That really has to do with the fact that there was lighting put in place through the referendums. And so they focused on other priorities, but they did have a small dollar amount that went towards improving the remote light control where staff can actually address it remotely through the internet.
I know that, I recently got an inquiry about Holder Park and their lighting.
Which one?
Holder Park.
Holder.
It's up in north, north.
Yeah.
North, the great north.
What was the inquiry area?
It was about lighting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do know you'll see way further on, we do have some lighting projects in our five-year CIP for the north area, but I don't know if Holder was among it. But we'll make a note.
Just a quick point on this, Ian. The lighting is usually paid for, the cost of the actual lighting when you go out there and have evening events by these different groups that are running the facilities, right?
Yes, that's usually part of their agreements.
Yes. Okay. Just so everybody knows.
Are you speaking up here? The night that they rent the facility, they pay for the lights? Or are you talking about the installation?
No, not the installation.
The actual electricity used.
I'm sorry, the actual what?
Electricity that they use.
For that night only, not the installation of the lights.
Correct.
I want to make sure.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I did have one more about the hurricane repair projects.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a lot more than what we just...
Again, this is only through '24.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Yeah, it's the last seven years. It doesn't include...
I think we included the Milton, did we?
Yeah, so this is not reflective of Milton.
Okay. Thank you.
So Mark talked about this a little bit. I'm not going to harp on it, but we are very grateful to facilities and county manager for this project moving forward because it's addressing things that we just did not have the funding for to be able to do. So, you know, as you look at this, Mark touched on it also, again, the use of contractors, that it's 38% cheaper to do it internally and takes half the time. So we're very, very happy with that process. Here's where those projects have been. So you'll see the areas that have been completed and the ones that are still underway. We are also working with facilities to do a beach shower that's supposed to say replacement project, not pre-placement. So that is, you can see what's up there. The ones that we have in place are rusting. They are cracking. The ones that have been chosen are actually will not have that and will have a longer Again, an idea of where those are going to be. The different districts. 17, or I'm sorry, chart 18, this is just kind of giving you a visual of the north area and what it encompasses and the municipalities and other areas that are a part of that. We will, as we go through the different areas, talk about the revenue, their expenses, their staffing, kind of what you've already seen at the department level. We break it down for each area as well as the referendums, maybe some background on that and their capital projects. So again, starting with fast facts, this is just for the north area. This is in everything that we are able to count. This is just some things that I wanted to highlight for you that, again, and these are the numbers that we can actually account, that they register for a program. It doesn't count like when they drop into the gym, those type of things. But as we, right now, do not have a way to count that. This, again, giving you a breakdown of the north area's funding and where it comes from. See at large, again, you'll see this kind of going throughout the different areas. Balance forward is a large section, so we'll have a slide on balance forward right there. And again, miscellaneous for the north area, because everything's a little bit different, that was donations mainly from parish going towards Blanton Park and Harry T. Moore Center. Intergovernmental was ARPA funding or is ARPA funding. And again, charges for services are pretty much primarily Manatee Hammock Campground. Here's where their expenses are broken out. And again, you can see that the largest share of that general fund is all going to salaries and benefits. You'll see that reserve number that's actually required as we're paying back the debt on the bonds that were put in place through the referendums and that will be going down as we pay off or being used to pay off those referendums and those bonds. Staffing for north area, little breakdown. North actually has 18 vacancies, eight in recreation, 10 in maintenance. So here we start to get an idea of some of the referendums that were voted into place. The first was a special rec district. It was actually voted in on 2000 and then 2006, there was another referendum to add additional money. And as you can see, the bonds will be paid off in '26. So like I said, that, those reserves will go away after '26. 2001 is when the MSTU was actually put in place and approved as part of that referendum. So here's some of the things that were done out of those referendum dollars. Chain of Lakes was constructed, complete renovation of Marina Park, Sandpoint and then enhancing of existing. This gives you an idea of what is actually being drawn through those two millages because there's a debt millage as well as the operations millage. And it's kind of giving you an idea about what, especially that operating one. Point eight is what was approved by the voters for up to point eight. We currently are at point 1657. So that leaves, especially once the debt is retired, because it's combined right now to get closer to that point eight, but once that debt is retired, we really can't increase that operating millage because it's above the line without impacting the aggregate. Did I get that right, Jill? All right. Thank you. Port St. John had a separate MSTU that was put in place through a referendum. This gives you an idea, and I know the map's kind of small, but the specific area that's encompassed. you an idea, and I know the map's kind of small, but the specific area that it's encompassed. And they also put a MSTU in place. This one was paid off in 2016. However, in 2015, an ordinance was put in place to continue that MSTU for this area. And again, some of the things that were done with those dollars. Again, an idea of what the millage is, because again, there's no debt on this one, because that was paid off. So it's just the MSTU. And again, you get an idea of what it's at versus what it could be. But again, it's fairly hard to hit that max without having to cut elsewhere. So up north, they actually had another referendum that was rejected by the voters in 2006, and just an idea of what was going to be done with those dollars. So there is also a District One MSTU. This includes the City of Titusville and Unincorporated, and it's addressed through that inter-local agreement I discussed earlier. Get an idea of what that MSTU is generating.
That's the safety.
Yes. All these MSTUs, everything that you see go towards operating, you're going to have the same issue if you tried to adjust them up because of the overall aggregate, because they're above the line. Here's an idea, we want to give you an idea of where they've been with their capital. So this is going back to 2011 through this year. You'll see that most until we got to about 2017, 2018, it was dollars that were from those North Area funding sources such as the MSTU, the referendum up until 2015. And then really in 2018, you see the inclusion of some general fund dollars. And that was really because there was a refocus by the county manager to address some of those ongoing issues and concerns. You've heard Mark talk about them. But we also have them in parks, and we'll get into those a little bit, too. So we do five-year planning. This is just a sample of what we have in the five-year plan for North Area. The actual total CIP for the area, like for 2026, you only see about 525,000, but there's over $4 million worth of items in that year's CIP. 2030, again, you got about 180,000, but there's actually over $5 million in that year's CIP plan. And those five-year plans are kind of a rolling plan. We adjust them every year. And as things get done, they fall off the plan. As we find things that we need to prioritize, they will move up potentially on that plan. So at the same time, we also have items that are unfunded. These are kind of wish list items. These are things that come from the citizens. These are things that come from, as we're looking at the facilities themselves. And so as we have funding available, they might move off of this unfunded into the CIP itself. But then we also, like Mark talked about, we look at some of our aging infrastructure, looking at even farther out than that five-year plan, to make sure that we keep an eye on what, some of the things that we're going to, we know are going to be coming up, just because of their lifespans. So now we'll move into Central. How am I doing on time? So again, just a visual representation of the Central Area. The numbers served through those programs, this is again, last fiscal year. Their balance forward. And again, earlier I talked about that 1.3 million of general fund in the balance forward as a department. You see it reflected here, and that's used, mixed with other funds to address some CIP projects. The expenses, and I know it's hard to see, but that salaries and benefits is that mixture of green and pink, because it's, again, that mixture of funding sources for the staff in the area. Central Area Staffing, they have 27 vacancies. There are six in recreation, 21 in maintenance. And just a visual of one of the referendums. The area it encompasses. And again, this is an area where they had, it come before them twice, and both times the voters approved it. Where the first one in 2000 is where the MSTU was established. Some of the things done with those referendum dollars. There was another referendum that would have covered the central mainland area that was rejected by the voters. And so you'll see that the Central Area, actually, their budget overall is less than the other two areas for parks and recreation. So there was also, like I said, in 2000, that MSTU was established. Here are the dollars that it brings in. And again, that MSTU is for the Merritt Island area. And the only, that referendum that was approved by the voters. Some of the things that have been done with those recreation MSTU dollars. Again, please tell me if I'm going too fast. Then there's also something that was created, not through the voters, but this was created through the legislature. It's called the County Special Recreation District Four. It used to include portions of District Four, but when the commissioned districts were redrawn, those parks that were in D4 at that time became part of D2 and D1. And because this was done by the legislature, the redrawing of the commissioned districts does not impact the boundaries of this recreation district. But even though it says District Four, it actually has none of District Four's facilities in it.
When I ran in 2006, all of Rockledge proper was in District Four. Now, I don't think any, any piece of actual rock, what we, you know, City of Rockledge is in D4.
So this one is also unique, because the way it was set up, there is an advisory body that's made up of representation from the county, the City of Cocoa, and the City of Rockledge. And so the revenues from this area is actually generated from taxes over those two cities, as well as unincorporated. Here's an idea of what that rec district generates through its millage. And again, the same idea of trying to give you an idea of what was approved. Here's the actual facilities that are included in that rec district. And then we get into the same idea, the same slide we did for North, which is 2011 to current year. Again, you're seeing those other funding sources and how low it is. And then you'll see the reflection of, again, that focus from the county manager putting additional dollars in. You'll see that 2023, I believe, was some, which hurricane was that? Do you remember?
Oh, 23?
Yeah, it was some additional funding. That's why the blue is so much bigger there. Yeah.
Ian and Nicole.
Ian and Nicole.
It's ironic.
Yes.
Serendipity.
So one of the things that you'll see, and if you remember from the previous areas, the North Area slide, when I talked about the five-year CIP, same idea, we do it, but the dollar amounts that we project out into future years are not as high as those other two areas, because they're not bringing in as much through their MSTUs. So we only, for the most part, between 825,000 and 875,000 a year is what we build a CIP for the Central Area for those five years. Some unfunded items. And then again, aging infrastructure. And I will note that even though Kiwanis Island Park was dedicated in 68, it did get a renovation in 2005. And then we jump into the South Area. Just a map, again, to give you that visual. Some fast facts for this area and the usage. Their funding. Again, if you remember, Central was about 18 million. It's about 37. There's also less general fund that goes to this area, because more of it is covered through those special revenue funds.
Just to clarify, though, you have three county commissioned districts in
Correct.
the South Area, just.
Correct. And that millage is on probably a bigger tax base. Where their balance forward is. Again, you see a large portion of it going to debt. We'll talk about how that's going to be going away to in 2026. Except, yeah, well, we'll talk about Eels separately. Where their funds are going, where funds are being expended. Their employees, and again, 26 vacancies. That's three in their administrative side, and we include administrative superintendents, supervisors, area manager, office staff. Recreation has six vacancies and maintenance has 17. So here's the South Brevard Rec District and the area it encompasses. You'll see that carve out for the City of Malabar. Again, there were two referendums that were approved. You'll also see that those referendum bond amounts were much higher than the other areas. And so they were able to do a little bit more. At the same time, that was, the district bond was set up, an MSTU was set up for that special rec district. And here is what that MSTU is bringing in on the operations and the debt side. Give you an idea, again, because of the amount of funding that goes into the South Area, you'll notice that there is no general fund that has gone to support their CIP over the Again, some examples of things that are in their five-year plan. I will notate that, like Vera, the turf replacement, there are actually six fields, so this is only two of the six. And that the turf itself usually has about a 10-year lifespan. And again, speaking to the amount of CIP per year, 26, it's 5 and 1/2 million, all the way to 2029, where it's 2.5, and 2030 is 2.6. This actually gives you an idea, this is actually from last fiscal year, to just give you an idea of how, because the South Area has a bit more funding, they're able to move some of their unfunded items, and these have actually become part of the CIP and are being addressed current year. But it's, it's kind of a luxury that the other two areas don't have. Again, idea of some aging infrastructure. And then we get into Eels. First three slides are going to be easy. Eels is a county-wide program, but it is still broken up into those same three, North, Central, and South. And these are just three maps of those different areas with the different amounts of acreage under their management, as well as sites. So you get the North, the Central, and the Here you get some Eels fast facts. So one of the things that I don't know that a lot of people are aware of, Eels actually does its own controlled burns for their properties. They've also actually been very nice and reached out to the parks and rec side, and when we need it on that side, they've come and helped us on that side, too. But in addition, they create and maintain fire lines also throughout their properties, which is something that would benefit, you know, everyone who surrounds those properties. Some ideas of other things in land management, for example, there's 49 miles of access and maintenance roll roads. They control for exotic species. That's not only plants, but it's also feral hogs, insects, those type of things. Educational activities, they also do special events for things like Earth Day, and programs, and guided hikes, and youth Here you'll see their funding sources, and you'll also see that there's no general fund. And here's the breakup of their balance forward. The vast majority of it is bonding. Yeah. And there's no general fund, sorry. Here's where their expenses are. And their staffing. And they currently have six vacancies, one in admin, two in recreation, and three in maintenance. Voter-approved referendums, there have been three to date, and I think it's not wrong to say that they've been overwhelmingly supported by the voters. Here are the dates and the amounts that have been approved for up to bonding. And so for the 2022, and you'll probably hear about this moving forward, either this year or in coming years, of that 50 million, 6.2 has been bonded. So there is still about another 43.8 million available to bond. Some of the things that have been done with the referendum bond dollars is a lot of land acquisition, which I think is the next slide, equipment purchases to maintain it, and then the construction of different sanctuaries, such as Pine Island, which has Sam's House, Enchanted Forest, and Barrier Island down south.
Can I just point out something real quick? I think the prior board, before the three new commissioners got here, didn't want to go up to the 50 million, bond it all out, and spend it all before you got here. There's nothing to say that you have to do that. You know, you can, you can do this several times. So, so that's, that's, you know, option that was left to you, and you'll hear more about that, that later, but that's why.
And then just one last thing on this slide. If you haven't been to Pine Island, Sam's House itself is actually, you know, the oldest standing home in Brevard, dating back to So again, talked a little bit of land acquisition. It's actually been a combination of those county dollars, as well as partnerships with the state, with St. John's. So of that 28,000 that's been acquired, you can see the breakdown. And then of that 28,000, more than 19,000 is actually under management by Eels themselves. Again, idea of their operating and bond MSTU for those debt funds. Some of their CIP. You'll see that they also do not have any green, but they do have some things that are other colors. We made them kind of that special revenue, because those are primarily donations. So for example, in 2012, and then '14 through '17, there was an Air Force donation. 2018 to 2020 was intergovernmental, and 2025, that little tiny bit there is interest. And then again, just trying to look farther ahead at aging infrastructure. A little bit about golf. I don't know, some of you may or may not know that the county used to run three golf courses, Habitat, Spessard Holland, and Savannas. They, back in 2015, and prior to that is when we ran them, 2017, they went to a management company that kind of failed. They went to a second management company who did a little bit better, and then it went out, and we got a group called Golf Brevard. Golf Brevard has been doing a fantastic job maintaining these courses. Here's a little, just information about the course themselves. So they took over in 2018. It's been a very successful partnership. When they took over, there was about 490,000 in total given to them. 390 was a loan. The other 100 was fees that we had from the golf courses that we, we gave to them to maintain and do that transition. They were also required for the Habitat to do a lease payment, because the Habitat They were also required for the Habitat to do a lease payment because the Habitat is actually on land owned by Valkyrie Airport. And so you'll see, and I think Frank mentioned it earlier, about those increasers that are on. And so there's an increaser on that lease payment. And you can see where they started back in 2018 to where they are currently. And then again, just based on feedback we've received, it appears that they're being maintained also from our staff, but I don't, didn't want to go there, but better than when we did And then the last few slides was just kind of an update, giving you of those Hurricane Milton dollars that were identified by the board, giving you an idea of where those projects are. And as you'll, you'll see, we've got several that are in progress. And I can go into more detail about these individual ones if you'd like. I do have that. We do have some, when you get to the, I believe it's the second to last slide, that have been completed. When you see the parenthesis underneath the number, that's the actual cost it was to complete it versus what was actually estimated when we brought that agenda item to the board. And that is my last slide.
Ian?
Yes, sir.
You're a miracle worker, sir. Anyways, well done. That's my opinion. Questions? Commissioners?
I have just one. I couldn't write fast enough. When you talked about the vacancies for Eels, you had one in admin. And then what was the second thing that you said? Two in rec.
One admin, two rec, and three in maintenance.
Three maintenance, okay. Thank you.
Chair?
Sir. On Merritt Island, when they imposed their own taxes for rec tax, does that affect the budget that they get up and beyond that? In other words, you know, would they, since they're taxing themselves at 2.7 million, I think it was, do they get funding from the county that increases their benefit?
Let me take the hit on that one. The answer to that is we use the general fund monies in Parks and Recreation to fund what's most needed. And so they, they have not been, and I think if you look at these slides, you will see that they are not equally distributed to the districts. As a matter of fact, the South District gets virtually none. You would see there's no dollars even in the capital programs because they did tax themselves and at a very high rate. And their facilities for a number of years have been able to be better maintained because of the additional funding that was available. There's general fund that is used in all the districts, but the, all the dollars like from the MSTU, and it's the same for Road and Bridge, right? Road and Bridge, every district has its own MSTU, but you still get general fund dollars. It's not equally and has not historically been equally. So that's the true answer.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Ian? Sorry you did a fine job.
Thank you.
Let's, we're going to go ahead and roll into Nbeds. Troy? You've got a high bar, sir. But I know she have less slides, so.
Just a couple.
Try to move the mic over to you a little bit, something we've been dealing with today.
My name is Troy Post and I'm with the Economic Development Zone, or Nbeds. We are a special dependent district that exists in the northern part of the county. And as a dependent district, we have accountability back to the county commission along with the city council in Titusville. Those two organizations, political jurisdictions, came together to form the zone. We function as an economic development organization, so we do a lot of the activities an economic development organization does, trying to work with existing businesses in the area, help them expand, of course, attract a new investment to come into the area. But our primary reason for coming into existence was to provide financial inducements, financial grants that could help drive capital investment in the north end of the county. And the reason we were created was because in 2011, of course, it was a pretty dire economic state at that point here for the county. Not only was the Great Recession affecting the country, but we had, of course, the losses due to the ending of the shuttle program. So the political leadership at the time thought that we needed a tool that could again provide grants that would induce businesses to expand and in so doing to create jobs. But there was a longer-term mission as well, and that was to try to make the area a little more economically diverse because the north end is still pretty heavily wedded to aerospace and to aviation-related industries. And on this slide, you'll see some of the distress criteria, just to remind you how things were. High unemployment, in fact, it was double-digit for the city of Titusville, that's an annual unemployment rate. High foreclosure rates. And the Milken Institute, which is a think tank that monitors the top 200 metro areas. At the time, we were ranked 177th out of 200, so not very good. The good news is things have improved in the last few years. We've been in the top 10 in that ranking, but we still have a lot to do to make the area more economically diverse. So as a special district, we had to define the area in which we would be using the resources allocated to us. And again, this will be pink money discussion, so we have to use that money for specific purposes within the district. And you'll see there, it's mostly District One commission seat. It is a little section of Commission District Two over on Merritt Island. It includes basically everything west of the lagoon from the beach line and Cocoa City Limits north to the Volusia County line. And it does include the Kennedy Space Center north. That area just outside of Kennedy is Exploration Park, which is the Space Florida Initiative, where they're trying to develop it as a business park. In terms of governance, we have a district board. We have our county attorney that attends those meetings of the district board. We meet once a month. Part of being a special district means that the commission and the council have a role in appointing the members of that district board. They meet once a month and they serve for four-year terms and they can be reappointed, but they do so, they do serve without any compensation. The Zone Board also has another role that it plays for the commission. Back in 2013, the commission decided to give the Zone Board the responsibility of being the governing body for the Spaceport Commerce Park. This is a development that the county created back in the early 1980s, acquiring about 300 acres of land and developing again into an industrial park. Since 2013, our responsibility is to negotiate projects and bring real estate contracts to the commission to actually vote up or down. And we actually have one of those on the agenda for next Tuesday that you'll consider. So to fund the agency, what the city and the county did was to create two tax increment financing districts. And the way in which that mechanism works for the TIF, we benefit from an increase in the value, in property values that take place in commercial and industrial property in the district. So if there's an increase in that valuation, we get an increment for that. We do not get an increment for an increase in residential valuation. It is strictly commercial and industrial. And it's only for the northern part, only for that district boundary map that you saw a little while ago, not for the entire county. Also, the valuation is something that is not set by the Zone Board. That is done by the separate constitutional office, which is the property appraisers office. And each year around summertime, they set that valuation and provide those figures to the budget office, and that's where we get our revenue allotment. In terms of the revenue allotment or allocation that's assigned to us, you'll see there that in the upper left-hand part of the slide, we have a revenue allotment of 14.7 million, which does include balance forward, which we'll talk about in just a second. If you look at the pie chart, again, this is pink money reserved only for specific purposes. You have the county TIF that for the current year has an allotment of 3.3 million approximately. And the city TIF has an allotment of 800,000. We do then have the balance forward amount of 10, 10.6 million. And if you look over to the bottom part of the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see a breakdown of how that is composed. We have about 6.6, it's in the county TIF, that's being carried forward into the current year, and 3.1 million in the city TIF that's being carried forward into the current year. That last item you see there is the Commerce Park, which I just referenced a few minutes ago, just under 900,000 being carried forward into the current year. That represents the proceeds from the sale of that property that goes into that restricted account. Per that ordinance that was passed in 2013, we can only use those monies for expenses related to the park. So things like landscaping signage, exterior lighting, those kind of things can be covered. But the bulk of those funds are used as a reserve so that we can purchase property back if something doesn't go the way it's supposed to be when we do these development deals. So in all of our deeds, when we do a land sale in the park, we have a provision that says within a certain period of time, generally two or three years, the business that is purchasing the lot has to develop the land. And by that, we define that as clearing the site, getting a building permit, and actually putting a pad in. If they can't do that within that period of time, then we get the ability to buy the land back. And the reason we do that is because we don't want somebody just to buy the land, hold it, and realize some kind of gain on real estate speculation. So we have to have money available to buy those properties back at the same price we sold it to them for, if that is the trigger that we reach. And that's why we carry that amount forward. So here's a look at our budget expenditures. And obviously, the largest thing that we do according to the pie chart is our grants and aid program. We have a reserve balance that you see there. On the right-hand side, we have operating expenses, capital outlay, and our compensation and benefits. We have a staff of three on the Nbeds. Capital outlay is generally related to improvements in the industrial park. This year, we're doing monument signs on some of the landscape medians in the park. This is a deeper dive into the operating expenses that you see there. Our major categories are contracted services, professional services, and of course indirect cost. The indirect cost figure is what's assigned to us under the county's cost allocation plan. In terms of contracted services and professional services, we have vendors that we use throughout the year to do different things. Land surveys when we do lot sales, we do environmental reviews of some of the property in the area. We can also work with different consultants that help us with market valuation of the lots, different things of that sort. This is the main thing though, this is our grant program. So just to kind of give you an idea, we have worked over the years on many different projects, but right now we currently are tracking these 19. These are projects for which funds have been committed. And if the companies do what they're supposed to do, that second column that you see there, the very total at the bottom, which is that 13.4 million, that is what we're obligated to provide if they do what they're supposed to do. Now, the thing that we want to emphasize is that when we do these grant projects, we never provide any money upfront. Everything is conditioned upon the project reaching some point of completion. At that point, then we have a disbursement. Sometimes in a project, you can actually have points toward completion. You can get to different installments as the project is progressing where they qualify for their grant, but no money upfront. So the third column that you see there is the remaining dispersments on these projects that are listed. So at the very bottom, that's a $7.6 million figure. We're contractually committed to provide that if the company reaches the point of completion. Now, the point of completion sometimes can be the completion of a building, getting it CO'd, maybe occupying it for a period of time. It could also be predicated on job creation. The recent deal that we did with the Lockheed project is going to be tied to jobs where they'll have to create jobs, evidence that they can hold it at the project side before they will qualify for the grant installments. The very last column that you see there is the year, the fiscal year in which we think it is likely that we would pay out the rest of those grants, assuming that the companies do what they say they're going to do. So it's very likely that for a grant, for example, or a commitment that is made in the current year, we may not actually pay out the grant until the next fiscal year or maybe the year after that. So for that reason, that tends to see us carry forward those larger amounts from year to year. Now, all of these grants are approved in accordance with a strategic plan. As part of being a special district, we had to have a plan that was approved by the commission and the city council. We did that in 2012. We've had a couple of planning sessions in the intervening years where we've considered amendments to the plan, but so far we've not ever produced anything to bring to the commission for their approval. So we're still working with what we have in the 2012 plan. It is available on our website for all to see. Basically, it fall, our programs fall into these three program areas. Small business assistance, and we can also do redevelopment of existing commercial and industrial space. High wage job creation, which is how we were able to work on the Blue Origin project, the One Web project, and of course, the Lockheed project. And we also have in this plan strategic initiatives that we can pursue. These are for both physical and non-physical infrastructure. So more than just helping with the installation of utility lines, it could be working on entrepreneurial development, it can be doing workforce development activities as well. So we do have several program tenants.
Can I pause you for a second?
Yes.
Do I remember correctly that you guys are going to be doing some kind of business, something soon? Are you able to talk about that?
So we are talking to the SBDC office about putting on a small business workshop that would be up in the north end to help entrepreneurs, and that is something that we can do. Again, things that are projects within the district is eligible for our expense, or activities that help us advance commerce in the north end of the district are eligible for us to participate in and support. And so we hope to support that workshop.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So we do have what we're calling program tenants. The first one I've kind of already alluded to, but it's important to restate it, our grants are what we call performance grants. You know, they're based on a company reaching a level of completion. For projects that have a value of the incentive that is more than half a million, even if it comes from the city TIF fund, it still requires commission approval. And we will have a project similar to that that will be coming up in the next few months where the county commission will have to see if they want to approve what the city is considering doing with some of the city TIF money. But grants that are based on performance. The other tenant that we have is, we're always searching for a rate of return that is five to one or greater. That is, for every $1 of Zone money being injected into a project, we'd like to see $5 or more of other sources of financing coming in. And the reason why we insist on that is, we never want the Zone dollars to be seen as a substitute for owner's equity or capital going into a project. The developer, the business owner must be at risk if they are participating in these projects. And the last thing is, we're always looking to see if we can make the justification that Zone dollars are warranted in these projects. There are some projects that do not need incentives. They may be too far along and it may be clearly evident that they don't need any assistance from us. Generally, where we come in is, our process involves having an application filled out in which they will identify what is a barrier or hindrance or some kind of a roadblock to implementing the project that they want to put together. With that information, we can then see if it's possible that it fits into one of our program areas where we can help bring the project about. So here just quickly are some select projects, given the essence of time, I won't go through them too much, but I will mention on that second, the middle photo there, the Farmco, that was originally a building that was built by Embraer. At the time, many, several years ago, they had purchased a company out of California that did their seat manufacturing. They wanted to develop another campus in the north end of the county that was a little similar to what they had in Melbourne. They brought that camp, that company in after, had an incentive from us where we were helping them offset the cost of construction and working the site, which was about a 15-acre site that they were grading. After a few years, they realized the efficiencies weren't there and being a very good corporate neighbor, they were willing to work with us. It did trigger a clawback in the incentive agreement. So an important thing that we always try to put in all of our agreements are ways to recapture money that has been provided to them through these grants if they don't follow through in subsequent years with the scope of the project that has been described within the grant agreement. So they did return the funds to us. We got the 1.5 million back. Were left with a building that then became a really good fit for a company that was expanding, which is Farmco Labs. We also do redevelopment projects. You're probably familiar with Titus Landing, which used to be the Miracle City Mall project. The very bottom photo though is a, a small business owner who has a small little restaurant in Titusville, wanted to go to the other end of the building he was in and put together a small-scale grocery for the neighborhood. Just a small business, but just kind of underscores that we're not always working with the Blue Origins and the Lockeeds of the world. We also have a lot of small businesses that we're trying to assist per the economic development plan. And strategic initiatives, we have, as you see there, some infrastructure projects. That middle photo is a project. That middle photo is a project we're working with Eastern Florida State on, which involves their aviation college, which is building a new facility up there in the Titusville campus. We served as a local match so that they could obtain state funding to build that building. So with that, I'll stop and see if you have any questions.
Commissioner Atkinson.
So you gave some data about when Nbeds was actually originally created, that unemployment was bad and foreclosures were bad. Do you know what that data is currently?
Well, I'm glad you asked that, because I do actually have that. This is our little newsletter that went out yesterday. And on that, the count, this is as of December, which was the most recent month that I had reported, the county unemployment rate was three point two percent. The labor force size for the county was three hundred and one thousand. For Titusville, it was three point two percent unemployment rate, twenty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-eight labor force size.
So since I don't remember your initial numbers, is that a significant improvement from what it used to be?
Oh, absolutely. I, you know, again, that 2011 statistic was twelve point something percent. So, so the, the size of the labor force has grown, certainly the unemployment rate has dropped. We continue to benefit from having a lot of defense sector companies in the area and aerospace companies in the area. What we are very interested in trying to develop further are other industry sectors. So boating, you saw the pharmaceuticals company with Farmco, other things, so that we're not, again, so completely dependent upon just those few sectors for our economic well-being.
May I?
Yes.
So the original sort of reason for Nbeds was, you know, the economic distress that we were having up in the north end. It sounds like that has done its job. It has created the, or helped to create, right, the thriving community that, that's happening up there.
I, we have fulfilled that part of our mission. I think the longer-term mission, and I didn't highlight it, but on the spreadsheet, there was a, a few words just under the heading for that slide that talked about the sunset provision. So when we were created, we were given a thirty-one-year lifespan, so we'd sunset in 2042. And the purpose of that was to lay the groundwork for, again, more diversification, more diverse industries. So doing what we can to go after those kind of manufacturers, as I mentioned, in boating and pharmaceuticals and stuff. So there was recognition that it would take a while to get there because of the kind of workforce needed to do all those variety of tasks. And also, given some of the challenges we face on just developing sites that would be able to accommodate those kind of users as well.
And so then, the, the three point three million of, of monies that, that come to you, that, does that come from, where does that come from, from us?
So it's generated from, we, we look at the appreciation of property values above the base year, and we get a portion of that appreciation of Avalon Tax, so general fund.
General fund, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Troy? Okay, sir, thank you very, very much. Commissioners, I think we're at a decision point here, so, so let's just get this out of the way. I'm hearing five o'clock, maybe somebody else thinks push through it. What do we want to do? It's the pleasure of the board.
Tell me, sir, what do we have left?
So here's what we have ahead of us. We have tourism, we have planning and development, and we have MIRA.
So would it not be, sir, that would be another four hours or something more like that?
I, I'm looking at the number of slides, and it's, I mean, Ian had a lot more slides than probably all of these together. So do you want to decide after we get through maybe Peter? Are you going to be, are, are you going to be half hour, Peter? He's going to be five minutes? You're going to be five minutes? Okay, let's do it. We'll revisit this decision after tourism. Okay.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'll be really short. Good afternoon. Talking about the tourism, which we are pink money, so it comes from the tourist development tax, which is the five percent tax on overnight lodging. So that's hotel, motel, any short-term rentals. The tourist development council acts as the advisory board to the, to the county commission, so you can see kind of how that breaks out. We have a number of subcommittees. This year, the beach and the marketing subcommittees are the, are the active ones. The others are not going to be active this year. And the tourist collections pay for everything from promotions and marketing, that's about half the budget. Beach renourishment is about twenty-five percent. Capital projects, art and cultural programs, the zoo, and the stadium. Little look at, just a historical look at our collections over the years. Ten years ago, we were just under thirteen million. I started in nineteen, we cracked sixteen million. Last couple of years, we've broken through the twenty-five million dollar barrier, and our budget this year is twenty-seven. We'll see if we, we get quite there. We're, we're doing well so far, but we've got some big months ahead of us, so we'll see how we do this year. You've seen this chart before when we did the, the marketing support program workshop. We went through the tourist development tax allocation. Just a reminder, the first two pennies, twenty-five percent goes to marketing, thirty percent goes to beach, and capital and cultural are up to thirty-five and ten percent. So those are a little bit, those have some flexibility. And then all the rest of the pennies are, are defined as is. So again, about half, half the budget, a little less than half the budget is marketing, and then, as I said, you know, the, the rest kind of fall out from there. This is what our budget this year looks like. It's fifty-five, a little over fifty-five million. It's higher than the tax collection because we have a lot of carryforward. We have some funds in, in reserves and capital funds that we're holding for various projects and such. So it's a little, little more than, than what we collect, and, and we reserve those for other projects coming forward. Little bit about beach. The beach fund, you know, is, is a big one. It's twenty-five percent of the budget. Big project this year is going on, about a fifty-two million dollar project in the mid-reach and south reach. That's from south of Patrick down to Spessard Holland. We were very fortunate in that they're, due to some of the storm damage that those beaches got, we got the Army Corps to pony up, and they've, they've basically covering that full project. Normally, we would pay probably somewhere in the range of ten to fifteen percent of that, so that saved us a little bit of money. But then, in the south beaches, we're a hundred percent responsible for the south beaches, and we got hit a couple of years ago by Ian and a few other storms, and that resulted in twenty-five million having to come out of the beach budget. Well, twenty-five million total project cost, but eighteen of that came out of the, the beach budget, and that kind of wiped out our, our budget for that year. And we ended up borrowing the other seven million or so. And the good news about that is that we will be getting FEMA money back, so about eighty-seven and a half percent from FEMA. We expect to get a little bit from the state of Florida, so we're hoping to get close to ninety percent of those funds back, but those take three to four years typically. So over the last two years, we have built the reserves back a little bit, but you can see one project kind of can really wipe us out. But we've got about eight point eight five this year, eight point five, eight-five million this year in, in reserve, reserves. But also, just a note, sand, cost of sand has gone, gone up over the last nine years, about eight percent a year, so we're paying a lot more for, for renourishment than we have before.
I have a question. So the beach restoration, is that supposed to be just the dunes, or is it supposed to be the whole beach?
It's the whole beach.
Okay.
Yeah, they do the, they, the, the sand placement is, you know, really to refurbish that beach part, but then the dunes have to be built up because that's sort of your final barrier to, to storms. And that's, that's usually a lot of planting and that type of thing that kind of holds that together.
Okay. And what about the, the rock that's on that beach?
In the mid-reach, they, they, they have to, you know, do some mitigation there because they can't cover the rock. They're not allowed to do that. But they've had in the past, and I'm not the beach expert, Mike McGary is the one who runs our beach program, but what they've done in the, in the past is they've actually built some artificial reef out there that's been pretty successful at attracting fish and turtles and lots of wildlife. And that's kind of been, for some of the, some of the rock that does get covered, that has kind of mitigated for that. But they can't cover all of the rock. They're not allowed to do that, so they have to kind of follow it up.
Is there a certain percentage that they're allowed to cover?
There is, and I don't, I don't recall it off the top of my head, but yeah, there's a percentage they're allowed to, but it's, it's federally protected, so.
Okay. And then mitigation for like the turtles, like the laying, the laying of their eggs and stuff like that, like making sure that they have enough?
So part of the beach fund pays for turtle monitoring, and that's a big part of it is to make sure that we're not, you know, negatively impacting turtles. And what we've seen over the last five to ten years has just been unbelievable growth in the number of turtle nesting that we've seen. I mean, we're one of the largest turtle nesting sites in North America, and we promote that heavily in our marketing, so.
For sure.
Yeah, it's important that we keep, keep those turtles coming, but they, they've really grown a lot.
Is there something like statistics or something you could get together for us to show like the?
The increase in, yeah, there, so we use several different turtle monitoring organizations. One is UCF, there's a couple others. And yeah, they, they track all that every year, and we can provide statistics on, on how much that's grown, sure. Yeah, you're welcome.
I think, I think probably natural resources has, has that information.
Yeah, absolutely.
Also, we don't do renourishment during turtle season.
Right, they have to be off the beach by the end of March, so that's the, that's when the, the height of the season begins.
Just as a point of clarification on that.
Yep. Just a little bit about the Indian River Lagoon Grant Program. That's, that was started back in nineteen, and twenty-one, twenty-two was the first year that we actually allocated the full one million dollars. There was a lot of different projects. The smaller projects don't have to have a matching, but if you're, if it's over a fifty thousand dollar project, then it has to have a point seven five to one match. That was something that was determined by the board a few years ago. Typically, the one million dollars is committed annually, but because of the, the damage that was done to the south beaches and the, the money that was spent out of the budget, we did not, with board direction, have IRL program, a grant program in twenty-four or this year, twenty-five. But a recurring hundred and fifty-seven thousand per year was awarded to KBB for five years to clean the causeways, so that comes out of the one million every year. And then a hundred and fifty thousand one time was allocated for derelict vessel removal for this year, and then we just heard that they're probably going to carry some of those funds forward next year, because they're not going to be able to use all of the funds this year.
How many boats does that cover?
It varies. You know, Matt Culver, who's retiring, has managed that program for a number of years, and it's, you know, they can get out fifteen, twenty boats a year, but it's, it's a laborious process, and it takes a long time to get approval to be able to even move those boats. So I think like this year with a hundred and fifty thousand, I think they're going to use a little less than half of that money, and then they're going to use the rest next year, so.
We get some state grant for that, too.
I believe they do get state funding as well. I don't remember the amount of that, but, but yeah, there's some state funds for that as well.
I do believe there's going to be some legislation that hopefully is going to make it easier to remove derelict vessels than what's currently allowed.
So this is a, this is a obviously fun topic. The lifeguard funding, this, this year, it was a three point seven four two million dollar program. Of that, about one point five six six million was paid for out of TDT. You can see the, the breakdown there, about five hundred and fifty-six thousand out of marketing, seven, ten out of capital, and three hundred out of cultural. As we looking at next year's budget, you know, a lot of the capital and cultural funds have been spent down, so if we were asked to do a similar amount for next year, then probably a little bit more will have to come from marketing, which obviously is, could impact us a little bit. So just a food for thought there. As far as capital projects, there's a number of capital projects underway that were recently funded or funds are being held for. The largest capital award in, in the history of the program is the aquarium. There's fifteen million dollars allocated. That'll break ground this summer, and it'll be one point five million per year for ten years. So this is the first year that that'll be paid out. The Canaveral Lighthouse was awarded last year. That should be finished, that's a project should be finished this year. Bright Line Station was awarded five million. We're holding those funds. They are waiting to see if they can get some federal funding to, to finish that project or begin that project, if you will. The Veterans Memorial Park Amphitheater's been awarded a little over two and a half million. That is a project that's well underway and should have a little bit of carryover into next year probably, because they're not going to finish that project this year. They're just starting now. Police Hall of Fame project, they were awarded five point seven million. They've, five million of that was awarded last year, so, or two years ago, it was a million a year for five years, so that goes through twenty-eight. Palm Bay Sacrifice Park, that was two fifty. That should be, that'll be done this year. They're, they're finishing that and doing the ribbon cutting this year. And then back in about ten year, or well, twenty-nine, so about nineteen, eighteen or nineteen, we spent five million dollars building those astroturf fields out of Vera, and that was a ten-year loan, so that's up through twenty-nine. And then if you look at this, it's a little bit of an eye chart, apologies for that, but the big numbers you can see are, at the top is the revenue, so for twenty-four, twenty-five, it's just under twelve million. And then you can see the, all the projects that make up the expense side of that twelve million, and you can see that there's really no, like this year, there was no available funds remaining after we awarded the seven, ten for the lifeguards. And then there is a, there is a two million dollar reserve, but then if you look at next year, it's also a very low number. The next year or two starts building up. When you get probably to twenty-nine and thirty, it'll start building up again. And then UTRIP, UTRSA, they operate the stadium for us under a thirty-year contract. They have to generate a hundred thousand room nights annually. Last year, they generated a little over ninety-five thousand, so they got hit with a little bit of a penalty, but they still spent a lot on stadium repair projects out there. If they're capital-type projects, then they get reimbursed, and they were reimbursed last year for four hundred and forty-three thousand, which came out of the stadium repair fund. They're also, they're required to contribute two hundred and fifty thousand to that fund annually, and they're also required to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on capital maintenance annually. And then the ordinance requires we hold three hundred and fifty thousand in that, that account on an annual basis. So that comes from the fourth penny. The MSP, we talked a lot about that this year, and, and thanks to the board, we moved forward on, on this. This was eight hundred and forty thousand funded between the cultural fund and some of the marketing fund. Forty-four projects or forty-four events were awarded eight hundred and five thousand dollars this year. We're in the process of contracting, working with all these different events now. Some of the events that have already happened will get reimbursements, and then some of them we're working with will get some marketing support as well, so they can choose from, from whichever they want. They could have either some marketing, or they could have expense reimbursement. And then we'll be bringing back probably to the TDC and then to the board next year's program, so we'll kind of make, make some recommendations for, for tweaking it, but it'll be probably a similar type of program for next year. And then our marketing plan, it's something that's recommended by the marketing committee and the TDC, and then the board approves it every year as directed by the state statute and our county ordinance. The last couple of years, the District Two, Cocoa Beach, has received about fifty percent of the budget, and then each of the remaining districts gets, gets the fifty percent split among them. So that was an agreement with the Cocoa Beach Hotel Association. We, in the, in the plan, we use Florida Space Coast as sort of the, the umbrella, but then we highlight everything from beaches to space to all the different amenities that we have in our county. but then we highlight, um, everything from beaches to space to all the different amenities that we have in our county. And then we highlight, uh, the municipalities as well. We use a mix of media from billboards to digital to TV streaming, all kinds of different types of media. Uh, we also have our own media outlets, like our Facebook, um, page gets millions of views. Um, we have a launch app. We have over a quarter million downloads of that. We have a website that gets millions of views. So have a lot of tools at our disposal as well as, um, heavily leveraging public relations, which is really important for us. Just a couple of creative, uh, things to see. This is from District One, some digital ads. This is some of the billboards. Cocoa Beach is running right now, Kelly Slater and Space and highlighting the beaches there. This is from Melbourne, highlighting turtles. Talked about that. Palm Bay, we really highlight a lot of their, their nature down there and fishing particularly they're known for. And then we look at, you know, we look at the top source markets, how we kind of figure where we target our marketing. You know, we use our cellular data tool that helps us, um, understand where people are coming from. Obviously, heavy, heavily within the state of Florida, but, um, still about, uh, close to 60% of our audience comes from outside the state of Florida. So we target a lot of, um, those main, main cities. A lot of people ask me, well, what would I do if we had more marketing dollars? I would probably go deeper into the list and, and try to reach people, you know, that are coming here already and try to find more people like them. So, uh, you know, we have a lot of, those highlighted areas are where we do market, but there's a lot of areas that we still, you know, have an opportunity to market to in the future.
Could I say something here real quick?
Yes, sir.
Just, uh, as also chair of the TDC, but having worked in tourism, this market for a long time. You know, the, the Florida folks, uh, that, that come here, you go to the parks, you know, when your kids are out of school, and they do the vice, vice versa over there that come to our beaches. So that's a, that's a lot of our, our, uh, traffic. And so that's our summertime market. Am I wrong? Is, um?
Yeah, I mean, it's heavy. I mean, obviously Orlando generates about 75 million visitors a year, so we try to get our share of those for at least a couple of nights.
We prefer that when they're going on 528, they don't, they don't go, uh, left to Fallujah County. That's our, that's our whole job, right?
Absolutely.
Take a right turn. There you go.
Yes, sir. Um, just a little bit of how, you know, we break out the campaign. We have an annual cam- campaign that runs all year long, uh, has billboards and airport signage, and we do a lot on digitally on, um, Google Search Words and, uh, social media. And then we do seasonal campaigns that focus on each, each season. So we just finished our fall-winter campaign. In fact, we just had, uh, TDT just came out yesterday, and, um, we had the best January in, uh, in history, and that was a big focus for us, was trying to increase some of that winter traffic. So we feel it was successful, obviously, with the results there. Uh, we just started our, uh, being in, uh, you know, February, we just started our spring campaign. Now we're kind of getting into the heart of, of spring. We're hopeful for that to be a really good season. Um, it's a late Easter this year, so that should help us a little bit as well. And then, of course, the biggest spend is summer. Summer's the biggest season, June, July, August, so, uh, we'll start marketing in May for that. And then just, you know, just finishing up, uh, a lot of other things that we do, but one of the big things is, uh, public relations initiatives. We, we get a lot of big media hits on different things. We're just named by Conde Nast one of the top 25 places to go in the world in 2025. So we were one of only two U.S. destinations to get that designation. That got, that generated a lot of media coverage for us, um, over eight billion in media impressions throughout the year. And if we had to go out and buy that media, it would cost us, uh, you know, tens of millions of dollars and, uh, obviously way more than what our budget would be. So PR is a really great way to, to expand our, our marketing efforts. And then you see some of the other things that we have going on. We're a film commission and sports commission and lots of other fun things that we do. Just a little bit about the future, as final slide. We, uh, are seeing on our pipeline report about a, about a dozen projects, um, over the next few years, about another 3,000 hotel rooms. We've got 11,000 rooms now in the county, so, um, that's another three. There'd be 14,000. The port has added a lot of new ships. They'll homeport 16 ships next, uh, this year, which will be, and I think there's four new ships that are, that are in part of that. Uh, the airport's really done a good job of bringing in some other airline service. Tuwee is a new, is a new partner. The last couple of years, we've been working very closely with them, uh, to market in the UK. Allegiance, Sun Country, and, and they're continuing to look for domestic airlines to partner with. From a launch perspective, that really helps us as well. People want to come and watch a, watch a launch, and we hope there'll be a day when there's a launch every day, uh, of the year. But right now, we're at, we were at 93. Last year, we think we'll break 100 this year, so that'll, that's always good for us. You know, we've had a couple of years of really strong fiscal, uh, you know, uh, results. And, and looking ahead, hopefully over the next couple of years, if we hit that 30 million mark, then, um, the state allows you to add a six penny. Uh, that would add about $6 million to our budget, which could go to various other, you know, cultural, capital, um, certainly beach and, and, uh, marketing and all of those things.
Now, Peter, when you say the state would allow us, that means a vote of referendum?
It would be a referendum, yes, sir. They just changed the law, so it, it's no longer a vote, um, by the, by the county. It has to be a referent, public referendum.
All the other pennies passed by referendum.
What's that?
All the other pennies passed by referendum.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just, just so everybody knows.
And then just, you know, a lot of major projects coming along. The Westin, Cocoa Beach, it's a 500-room, four-star property. It'll be our first four-star. Um, still kind of waiting to hear, but we think Margaritaville will start construction again in Melbourne. Uh, Westgate Pier, they're building a, a pretty nice-sized property there. Part of the, um, the Westin is a convention center, um, of course, the aquarium, Bright Line Station. So it's a lot of, a lot of things happening in, in the tourism world. I think we're on a, a very good upward trajectory, if you excuse the pun.
Questions for Peter? Okay, uh, Commissioner Altman.
I know the beaches are very critical to our, uh, our tourism industry. I, I recently heard a report on one of the media outlets about the most dangerous beaches, uh, in, in all of America. And, um, one of the organizations listed all 10 of the most dangerous beaches in the U.S. were in Florida. Of course, that outlet was in Texas, right? I mean, they're not very, they're fighting for launches, they're fighting for beach access and tourism. They're, they're our foe, so I question the objectivity. And their particular, uh, report, I think New Smyrna was number one, Daytona was number two, Miami Beach three, Cocoa Beach number four. The value of funding our lifeguards, keeping an eye out for sharks, because that really hurts our tourism promotion. Do we have any, are we doing anything to respond to that? That, that's a threat. If we were to do a SWAT analysis, that's definitely a threat. Are we doing anything to just respond to that type of negative exposure?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, not directly per se. I mean, obviously, a lot of our, our marketing, our promotion highlight the positive side of, of what we have to offer, and, and that's, you know, kind of my belief has always been, try to focus on your positive. Don't, don't try to combat the negative in the, in the media, because you never win that battle. But, um, yeah, I mean, I think to the degree that we've, um, you know, we have, uh, lifeguards on our beaches, that we have, um, great programs, you know, we have great beaches. I mean, I think that's, that's the answer to that ultimately, and positive will always, I think, outweigh the negatives, so.
E- even the Texas article did mention, in Cocoa Beach, that, good news, bad news, that were 26 shark attacks. None of them were fatal.
Right. A lot of people with injured feet and legs and things like that, but, yeah.
Destin has had a nightmare. They've had some bad, bad attacks, but just curious, we want to get, you know?
Something we keep an eye on, you know, stay ahead of, but I, I think if we keep pushing our, the positive aspects, and I think the things like the Conde Nast and those types of relationships where we're, we're featured and highlighted and, you know, global coverage like that, I mean, that, that really overshadows some of that.
I want to thank you for what you do. We have a great TDC, and our chairman's involved. I was lucky enough to start the TDC, and I, my last cycle in the commission, Tom Lawson, was very involved in. Wow, you guys have come a long way. It's very sophisticated, very well done.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to say something about lifeguards real quick, and I think Commissioner Goodson might be reaching for his mic.
I might beat you. I don't, uh, Commissioner, you weren't here the last, uh, prior to your election. We had Cocoa Beach come, and they stood up before the commission and said they didn't care about tourists. They were not going to put a penny in lifeguards, okay? But just recently, they did put a, a news blast out that they're going to, uh, go after their Airbnbs and raise more money for them. So this year, when we have a, uh, the lifeguards come up, I'm sure it's going to be a fight again. But, uh, you know, it's kind of interesting that everybody wants the tourist dollars, but don't want to help pay the expenses to get them there. But that's my comment.
And I lived through that fight in Tallahassee, and, Tom, you may have been there. I, you might, you were there. And, um, there was a bill that allowed for the local TDC and the Panhandle to...
Bay County.
Fort Walton, yeah.
Yeah.
To, uh, to hire lifeguards, to pay for lifeguards. I was under the impression it's not legal to require the TDC, or to use TDC dollars for lifeguards. I know opponent Morse, who may have a difference of opinion, because we, that's why we, it, that's why it required, uh, uh, act of the legislature to, to require that in Fort Walton.
That's kind of a twofold situation. Something you would say yes, and...
Yeah.
Morse? It's a, it's a bit of a misnomer, because honestly, what that statute did was, um, allow for those counties to use tourism taxes for police and emergency medical services. And there's a statutory definition for emergency medical services that doesn't include the lifeguard function. So what was authorized to them isn't authorizing lifeguards. My position has been, uh, there was a 1990, I want to say Attorney General opinion years ago, that said you can't use the equivalent under the statute of what we call our beach fund to fund lifeguards. And, and that makes absolute sense, because that statute's very clear that it's for things like, uh, capital projects on beaches, nourishment, things like that, not, uh, not lifeguard kind of services. But since that opinion came out, the legislature did change the statutes to say that you can use dollars from what we call our marketing fund to pay for any service that has as one of its primary purposes, the attraction of tourists, as evidenced by the promotion of that service, um, to tourists. And so the board adopted a very, uh, lengthy resolution with a lot of findings that one of the primary services of providing lifeguards on the beaches is the attraction of tourists. And, um, and Peter's been promoting lifeguards to tourists. We've had billboard campaigns with lifeguards. We promote, um, lifeguard locations on tourism websites, things of that nature. Based on all of those things, it's been my opinion that we can use under that provision, uh, TDT to fund lifeguards. Now, the, at the request of the TDC, uh, the board just prior to your election, gave me direction to request an Attorney General opinion regarding that use. Um, still in process. It's, um, I, I'm going to seek it soon. Frankly, I haven't had a lot of urgency. I don't know if you've noticed, but over the last five years or so, they're issuing about three a year, so I don't have a lot of, uh, hope that we're, maybe we will. I don't, I don't know. I will submit it, but it needs to be thoroughly and properly done to help them get to the right conclusion about our particular use of that TDT. So, um, we will send that off, but I think our position is certainly well-founded. And I think regardless of what the Attorney General says, all of the Attorney General opinions on tourism development tax use have always said that while they can provide some advisory opinion, it's, it's always ultimately up to the board making that determination, those findings, whether it's a proper use or not.
I wonder if you required your lifeguards to be EMTs, if that would also open up a door to providing EMT services?
Well, it's only in those, it's only in those counties that you can use it for the EMT services. That might actually cut against us ironically, but, um...
Yeah.
But I think lifeguard services are unique.
It's a fascinating issue.
Got Commissioner Atkinson, and then I'm going to say something on the lifeguards toward the end there.
So I've lived here my whole life. I've lived on the beach my whole life. The beaches are always packed.
Hey, pull the mic a little closer. I'm sorry.
Not packed. So the beaches are always packed. My question to you is, do we have data that shows that having lifeguards increases the tourists who come to those beaches?
I've never seen something quite that has that direct line correlation.
But what we do have, and what we based a finding on, I'm going to say on the record here, is that Peter has done survey data of visitors here and what kind of amenities draw them to certain beaches.
Lifeguards is, uh, at the top of that list, yeah.
Right.
Right.
We, the prior board got here, um, and it, you know, it was, it was a little contentious at, at that time. And I was, uh, the deciding vote, if I remember, so, um, I'll own it. There were drownings, and, uh, some people, uh, uh, attribute that to rip currents, a lot, a lot of rip currents. And some have suggested that after the beach re-nourishment is done, maybe there won't be rip currents. I don't know if that's true. I'm not a, I'm not a, uh, oceanographer. But, uh, we were contacted by the public who says, hey, this is, this is bad press. This, this doesn't sound good. You need, you need to do something. And so we were looking at, at spending county dollars to increase lifeguard services. And so, uh, we looked to the, to the tourism to help pay for lifeguards, because I'm going to clarify something, that up until that point, provides, property owners paid 100% of the lifeguard cost, 100%. And, um, tourism tax wasn't paying for lifeguards. Tourists aren't property owners. They don't pay property tax. And so that's how we got there. Uh, we were, we were responding to, to a problem. I don't know what this board is ultimately going to decide or, or how that works, um, but, uh, we'll, we'll see going forward. Sir?
Representative Atkinson, I just noticed in this study that Melbourne Beach was the ninth most dangerous. Now, I don't believe this, but... There've been 19 recorded shark attacks. Most of the shark attacks were surfing-related, and it says, be careful out there.
So I can tell you that my son surfed every single day, and I've gone swimming lots, and I've seen a shark every single time, because that's where we live. We live next to the ocean where the sharks live.
So for the record, she swims for sharks, and now she's a county commissioner, because she works for sharks.
And she has all her legs.
Yeah.
And, and for people who, who lived here a, a long time, you know where the rocks are, right? So you, you know, you know the beaches to... Yeah, that, that's a, that only takes one time, you're right, to figure out where the rocks are. Okay. Any other questions or comments for Peter? No, thank you, sir. Uh, oh, Commissioner Goodson? All right. Okay, uh, thank you, sir, very much. Commissioners, okay, I think, uh, well done, 5 o'clock, so we have a decision here. We have planning development yet? We have Myra, or we stop here and they... What's that? Oh, I know, I, I didn't forget that. I just hadn't...
Make the motion, we stop here and have another day. This has been so much fun. After four hours, I think staff needs to go home.
Okay, okay, so, uh, is that, is that agreeable? Well, okay, we've, we've got, we've got one for, uh, stop here and, and resume another day. Okay? All right. Okay, so we're going to go now to public comment. We have one card. Sarah Skywin, ma'am?
Hello, Sarah Skywin, Melbourne, Florida. I'm here representing the Brevard Bark House Incorporated. I put a couple pieces of paper on, um, the desks of all of you and business cards, so you can take a look. I was here the other day, um, just voicing the interest that, uh, our nonprofit has in the address of 2605 Flake Road. It's an old Brevard, um, it's the old Brevard Sheriff's, um, rescue. It is an older building, but it is the building that is available. It is vacant right now, but it's the only building available to, um, be a shelter in Brevard County right now. We, in the past six months, I mentioned before, we have, between two homes, it's me and another person, have helped 52 dogs and, um, get... have helped 52 dogs and get permanent homes. We have had 6,000 pounds of food delivered, you know, taken in and delivered to animals in need and another 3,000 pounds of various items for the animals in need as well, just under six months. And that is following the laws and regulations of having animals at your home, you know, to either foster, you know, take care of. You're only allowed four animals. And then on top of whoever you bring in. Now, there isn't a regulation on puppies six months and old, younger. So with that being said, we would love to expand our, our help to the community. And we would love to take over that building. We need it. We need it. The community needs it. And there has been question about the condition of the building. I am well aware of the, the situation with that. There's a, there's an itemized list of what needs to be done. It does not scare me. I know that there's a dollar amount that people look at. I look at project and each project. And I know we can accomplish it. I wouldn't be here if I thought it was impossible. It's not near, near impossible. It's not even anywhere near. A lot of it is housekeeping, honestly. It does need a roof. I have spoken to roofers. I'm, I do not want to get just a roofer just to get in there. I'm shopping, you know? And we want to take the responsibility of that, that money's putting forth into the building. It's cheaper for us to use a building that's already existing and then putting our efforts and time and donations into fixing it up. I think it's beneficial to the community that we use that building. It's a wonderful place and a lot of magic can happen out of there. I know it and we'll make it happen. We have the support from Palm Bay all the way up to Edgewater, every place in between, and even out to Kissimmee. I have people waiting, just waiting, going, we're ready to go. So I'm just asking all of you to look at our website, call me, ask any questions that you want to. Yes.
Have you met with the District One Commissioner about this? Because it's in Titusville, right?
I have, yes.
Okay, that, that sounds like a district item eventually, possibly. Okay, okay. And you spoke the other night at the Sears workshop. We all remember that. So, okay.
And I'll see you on the 11th because it'll be up on here about what to do with the building.
Oh, okay, it's on the 11th agenda?
Yes.
Oh, okay, very good. I wish you luck then.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, is there anything else today? Any other discussion that we need to have before we go? Or we can do that another day?
I just have a short thing.
Okay.
I, I brought this up at the last workshop and I just wanted to bring it up again about public comment. As you saw, we had one public commenter today. And I would like to propose for workshops, if we could have, I heard you guys say that you didn't want to have, have it after every item. But if we could have it in the beginning and the end, it would, I think, be kind to the people showing up to speak so that they didn't have to sit through four hours of, of a meeting. I didn't know if we could talk about that.
How about we discuss that more at the meeting on the 11th?
Okay.
All right, give everybody a chance to sleep on that. Is there any other discussion today? All right, let's go through board report real quick. Mr. County Manager, board report. Mr. County Attorney?
No report, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Delaney?
No report.
Commissioner Altman?
I just want to emphasize, I know, Mr. President mentioned the need for restaurant renovation. I had an incident today, without being too graphic, one overflowed on me. And so I experienced first...
I think they're saying they want to hear you say that again in the microphone.
You got to say it again.
They'd like to hear you say it in the microphone.
I said, I agree with our county minister. We really need to work on those bathrooms here at this building. During the break, I had an incident where one overflowed on me. I won't get too graphic, but I've experienced it now firsthand. And so I strongly support that initiative. Okay, that's what, it's a great idea.
I'll suggest to you that it's, that it's a volume issue, okay? It doesn't, it doesn't happen every day. So Commissioner Goodson, board report.
I just want to have something, but after that, I can...
Okay. Commissioner Atkinson?
No report.
Okay. I don't think I have anything else. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate it. And we will get back to, we'll start with planning and zoning next time.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.